Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The October 1st, 2018 meeting of the Anarundel County Council is now in session. You're invited to stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Fink will lead the invocation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Please bow your heads. Dear Father, we ask that you give this council the wisdom and the courage to continue to lead this county and make the right decision. We also ask that you protect those serving overseas. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Good evening once again. I have just a brief announcement before I ask the Secretary to read the ethic statement. We have only one more meeting left after tonight in this term, and after that, any pending legislation will die a natural death. So we have 14 bills to get through tonight, and we can't vote, many of you know this, but we can't vote on bills or amendments after midnight. Hope we don't get to that problem. And this meeting is the last time that a bill can be amended, and we can and will, if we get that late, we will have public hearings, even though we can't vote after midnight, we will go and continue to have public hearings and get them done. And I ask my, I'm going to make a request of my fellow councilmen to be aware of the time spent on discussion.
Thank you.
We should be as, we should follow rules of brevity as much as possible.
I didn't get the extra ones.
So with that, Madam Secretary, would you please read the ethic statement?
The Ethics Commission has asked that I advise you that under certain circumstances, members of the public may qualify as lobbyists when they testify before the county council. If so, the law requires that certain information be filed with the Ethics Commission. The Chairman of the Ethics Commission has asked that those present review the Ethics Commission information in the foyer of these chambers. If there are any questions about lobbying requirements, speakers should contact the Ethics Commission in the Heritage Office complex on Reva Road.
Thank you very much, Madam Secretary. We will now invite members of the audience who signed up before the meeting to address the council briefly on any subject not included on the printed agenda, with remarks limited to two minutes. I have just one person signed up, Dale Waldroof. Mr. Waldroof, there you are. Thank you for being here, sir.
Dale Waldroof, 876 Claphy Avenue, Gamberles, Maryland. Gentlemen and folks of the county, as you know, I've been coming here for the last two meetings. I figured it's only fair, you know, if I can come here and tell you that we're 50 short, it's also only fair that I come through and say that we've had some positive developments. We're not where we need to be, but it's steps in the right direction, and I'm appreciative of it. I believe it was effective of 9/28, we've raised the starting salary from 41.7 to 44.3. And they're also going to continue a $3,000 bonus program. So I'm appreciative of the county Executive's Office for doing that, to try to get people hired. We're also having a one-stop recruitment information session that's going to be starting at Ordinance Road on October 27th. And they're also advertising that on iHeartRadio. So they've been doing some out-of-the-box thinking, trying to advertise this and also advertise positions at the detention center. So again, you know, we are 50 short, we do have a stabbing issue, but we are trying to go in the right direction. And again, if I can come here and tell you that there's an issue, it's only fair to come here and tell you that we're moving in the right direction. So in brevity, thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Thank you. Mr. Grasso.
If I don't make this state senate thing, can I get a job with you guys, man?
Sir, we're hiring, and use me as a reference.
I talked to the chief, he said there's no age limit over here, so I might have to feel like I gotta do something special, you know what I mean?
I can be your character reference, sir. I'm sure you're a character, so.
That's good, thank you.
You will get no argument on that point, sir.
Amen.
Thank you. Is anybody else who wishes to speak at this time in the invitation to the audience, please come down at this time. Seeing no movement, we will close the invitation to audiences. Is there any amendment, council member would like to place on the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Grasso.
Okay. I have to say, straight to the point, I was right again. And the entire council was also right. Some of you folks may have read the local newspaper on the findings of one particular case with the Anarundel County Liquor Board. We felt, the council, that the liquor board was operating improperly, and there was a lot of nepotism going on, so this council moved forward to defund the liquor board, because if you weren't part of this million-dollar club, good luck on getting your license, is all who you knew. So through a bunch of yelling and hollering in indirect ways, several of the members stepped down, and of course, one still on the liquor board. And so the court of, I believe it's a special appeals, if you read the article in the paper, has ruled, and basically, I don't claim to be a lawyer, but what I get out of that article is, is basically, some of those members were operating on their personal beliefs and not by the law. And that's what really bothers me more than anything. I can tell you that this council, including myself, we put resolutions in to go into the state government, to call from the liquor board going from a three-member to a five-member, it didn't make it, okay? We called for term limits on this liquor board to be two, four-year terms. It didn't make it. Particularly, one senator turned around and actually took the liquor board away from the county council, where you have seven eyes watching this liquor board's budget, so that we couldn't scrutinize what they were doing, and turned it over to the Controller's office. Well, now the justice is coming down the pike. I suggest you folks read the article in the paper that was out several days ago, and we're finally cleaning up the swamp, as I called it, in Anarundel County. So thank you to my colleagues and everything supporting behind me. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Grasso. Is there any other council member would like to place an item on the agenda? The administration, I would point out, has withdrawn bills number 8118, 8218, and 8318. May I have a motion that partial reading of any bill, resolution, or minutes constitutes reading of the whole?
Simultaneously, sir. Second.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Please read the minutes of September 17th, 2018.
The meeting was called to order by Chairman Michael Peruca at 7:00 PM and opened with the invocation given by Mr. Grasso, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of September 17th, 2018?
Simultaneously, sir. Second.
Thank you. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. The minutes of September 17th, 2018, Constitution Day. Stand approved as read. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of the resolutions to be introduced this evening.
Resolution number 3718, Resolution approving the nomination of Billy Penley as acting health officer. Resolution 3818, Resolution supporting the Anarundel County Board of Education's fiscal year 2020 Public School Construction Capital Improvement Program request for submission to the Interagency Committee on School Construction.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. For some reason, I can't find my, excuse me, one second. May I have a motion to suspend the rules to hear and vote on bills number 7418, 7618, 7718, 8418, 8018, 8518, 8918, 9018, 9418, 7818, 8618, 8718, 8818, and 6918, out of order?
Simultaneously. Second.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Peruca?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. The motion to suspend the rules to hear and/or vote on bill numbers 7418, 7618, 7718, 8418, 8018, 8518, 8918, 9018, 9418, 7818, 8618, 8718, 8818, and 6918, out of order, is passed.
Thank you very much. Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill number 7418 as amended.
Bill number 7418, An Ordinance Concerning Zoning Plasma Centers, excuse me, Plasma Centers, State Licensed Medical Clinics, and Transitional Housing.
Thank you. Mr. Grasso.
Pretty much said what I had to say the last couple of meetings, and I'm tired of beating the drum. I don't know if Mr. Smith has anything to say, and let the votes fall as they may fall.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Let the votes fall where they fall.
Thank you for your brevity. Mr. Marsick?
We're supportive of the bill, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any discussion? We'll now open the public hearing on bill number 7418. We had no sign-ups for... Thank you. Anybody wishes to testify on bill number 7418, please come down at this time. Seeing no movement in the audience, we will close the public hearing on bill number 7418 as amended. Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill 7418 as amended.
Bill number 7418, An Ordinance Concerning Zoning Plasma Centers, State Licensed Medical Clinics, and Transitional Housing.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on bill number 7418 as amended.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer?
No.
Mr. Walker?
No.
Mr. Peruca?
Aye.
Five in the affirmative, two in the negative. Bill number 7418 is passed.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Please read the title of bill number 7618 as amended.
Bill number 7618, An Ordinance Concerning Real Property Taxes Tax Credits Retired Veterans.
Thank you. Mr. Smith, Mr. Walker, Mr. Pruski.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. This bill has been 74, I'm sorry, 7618 is going through a number of iterations. Essentially, it's just going to allow veterans who are retired here in the county and are of 65 years of age, who own a home, and allow them to get 15% property taxes, reduction off of their property taxes. The state passed a provision a couple of years ago that allowed jurisdictions to do this. It was specifically carved out for retired veterans. I wanted to ensure that our veterans here had the opportunity to take advantage of it, which is why I introduced the legislation. And so, you know, we've talked about this during several meetings already, and just ready to put it in action, so, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chris, Mr. anybody, Mr. Marsick?
Mr. Chairman, this is Council Bernie Marsick, County Executive's Office. We are supportive of this bill, as we have stated before, and look forward to working with the council to offset the impacts of the bill.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for, any other discussion? We'll open the public hearing then on bill number 7618. Does anybody sign up for that?
Anybody speak?
Nothing for that, okay, thank you. So there's nobody signed up. If anybody would like to testify on 7618, please come down at this point. Seeing no movement, we will close the public hearing on bill number 7618. Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill number 7618.
Bill number 7618, An Ordinance Concerning Real Property Taxes Tax Credit Retired Veterans.
Any further discussion?
Ms. Chair.
Mr. Trumbauer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just very briefly, I'm going to vote for this bill. I just want to go on the record and say, at least for my vote, I don't view my yes vote on this bill as an endorsement of the strategy to offset it necessarily. So I just want to be sure that everyone knows you can vote for this bill and not necessarily agree with the administration's plan, should they get reelected and come back next time.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I'm going to make a comment as well. I've made this comment before, that I believe this is a bad idea, and I believe it's not constitutional, what we're doing. I think our constitution, Maryland constitution, allows us to create different tax rates for different kinds of property, but not for different kinds of people. And this actually creates classes of people. Actually, our U.S. constitution has a provision that forbids titles of nobility. And titles of nobility, really at its heart, was giving people special privileges based on their, based on who they were. And I think that this slides into that category, so I think this is, this and other things like it are not a good idea, so I plan to vote against it. That's my two cents. Yes, Mr. Grasso?
Yeah, I wanted to chime in also and say to myself, I think it's a great idea. I guess the thing that bothers me, like it did at several other meetings, I just can't get my hands around why somebody that makes, that lives in a $500,000 house actually needs a tax break. And that's what really bothers me or anything. I guess the real, real thing that gets me here, and I'm going to, I know Mr. Mars is exerting a deep thought, but I just kind of refresh my memory, this is only good for five years, though. Is that, is that pretty much where it's at?
Yes.
Okay. So that way I can say, well, we can try it out. I always support the veterans and I support the police, but in the same token, too, like I said, you know, there could be a very hard-working veteran and, you know, living in a half-million-dollar house and asking for a tax break, just kind of, just doesn't grab me exactly right, no disrespect to our veterans, because like I said, I'm all about that, but I just, that's just something that bothers me. Five years kind of helps me get over it.
Thank you, Mr. Grasso.
Mr. Chair. And again, just to provide clarity, that 500, the value of a home has to be 500,000 or less, but the 500 came into view, that's the veterans VA sort of bill in this area, if you're a veteran and you go get a VA loan, the most you can get on that home loan credit is, I think it's like 516,000, somewhere in that range. So it was to make sure that it comported, that's where the number came from. But I would argue and say that most of the retired 65-year-old veterans that are here, you know, are living modestly, and you're probably going to get the majority of these folks in less than $500,000 homes. And so the state created the benefit, I just want to make sure our citizens can benefit from it, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Anything further? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on bill number 7618 as amended.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Peruca?
Nay.
Six in the affirmative, one in the negative. Bill number 7618 is, yes, is passed.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Please read the title of bill number 7718 as amended.
Bill number 7718, An Ordinance Concerning Zoning Conditional Uses Licensed Dispensaries, Growers, and Processors of Medical Cannabis, Special Exception Uses Licensed Dispensaries of Medical Cannabis.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Mr. Marsick?
I have nothing to add, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any discussion, any questions? We will now then open the public hearing on bill number 7718, and I will call, we have quite an extensive list of folks, I'm going to call the first names. Please come down and take your seat here. We're going to call six names. Raffaela Cassandra, Chad Angel, Angel.
Mr.?
I think.
Oh, pardon me. I'm sorry.
You have to answer it, I think.
Thank you. Oh, here we go. Mr. Wilson, Wildon?
Ian.
Robert Doty? Richard Smith? Stephen Vandiver? Kevin Melanson? Nathan Maris? Thank you, folks. The first name is hard for me to read. Is it Mr. Wildon?
Ian Wilson.
Wilson. Excuse me, Mr. Wilson. Good evening.
My name is Ian Wilson, and I live and own property at 1501 West Street, Annapolis. That past bill that just passed, I would reference that being the Master Gunnery Sergeant retired from the Marine Corps, that little house on West Street, that little white bungalow candy corner from the library, I paid $250 for about five years ago. And I guarantee you, there's no, I don't think there's any other Marines, I know two other Marines that live on West Street, they may have paid a little more for their house at that time. But back to this amendment. I drive down West Street every morning at 7:15 to the Open Path parking lot. I contend with the traffic, and I'm concerned with additional traffic at the dispensary we'll bring. When I leave the Open Path parking lot, I have to drive north on General's Highway and turn around at Valley Road due to the high traffic. I cannot make a left turn. The Walker Amendment silences my right to speak and silences citizens in Anarundel County. This is not tipping the scales, this is doing away with them. I will not let my voice be silenced. It is a bad idea for a dispensary to locate on General's Highway behind where I work. It's bad for nearby businesses. It's bad for the neighbors, bad for traffic. It's even a bad location for a dispensary. I will not be silenced. I am allowed to participate in the public process and to voice my concerns about where a dispensary locates. At least today I am. I would hope that this evening the council would take the opportunity to do their job and vote on legislation that works for all taxpayers, legislation that doesn't help one company at the expense of everyone else's rights, legislation that makes sense for the community and preserves our voice. That's probably my two minutes.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Wilson, appreciate that. Thank you for your service. Mr. Doty?
Yes, my name is Robert Doty. I live at 988 Placid Court in Arnold. I'm here to speak for greater flexibility with respect to cannabis dispensaries. Thank you for this opportunity. I'm a successful businessman in Anarundel County. I'm in my mid-70s. This is the most successful year that I've ever had in business, but I have cancer. I have seven neuroendocrine tumors in my liver. They began in my pancreas. In the past three years, I've lost 53 pounds. In 2018, I've lost 12 pounds, four pounds in the last month. It's very difficult for me to maintain my weight. I can be frightened to see my weight drop uncontrollably. I eat more than I want at meals. I snack during the day. I can eat anything and as much as I want, and more. I need the appetite stimulation that cannabis can give me. It can also help with sleep. My primary care doctor recommended it. There are many people much worse off than I am. I can drive long distances to a dispensary, others cannot. The chemotherapy and other treatments I receive don't debilitate me. I have my hair. I continue to work every day. I go to the gym several times a week. I live a largely normal life at this point, but one side effect is weight loss. My oncologists tell me that people with my type of tumors can live many years, even decades, but I can't do that if I continue to lose weight uncontrollably. Information online tells me that approximately 25% to 33% of cancer patients die from weight loss and muscle loss, not from the cancer. We need this for longevity. I need it for longevity. It's a matter of life and death for me. What would you do if you were in my shoes? I thank you for your attention. I just want you to understand there are real people out here.
Thank you very much, Mr. Doty. Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Smith.
Good evening. I'm Richard Smith of 12 North Southwood in Annapolis, Maryland, and I oppose the amended bill 7718 because I have a vested interest in the dispensary zoning rules, and this amended legislation will silence my voice in the zoning process. As currently written, the bill will revoke my rights to participate in the appeal process while a dispensary seeks to locate in bye-bye business. And I have many reasons for believing that the General's Highway is not a great place for a dispensary, and I appreciate the voice that I currently have. But this is about much more than me and my business and even my own voice. 7718, in its amended form, will revoke the rights of everyone who lives and works along General's Highway. No one in the surrounding community will have input into this particular dispensary's location if this passes. However, the good folks in General's Highway are not the only people being affected. And silence, this is about more than even them. Mr. Walker's recent amendment does collateral damage to neighborhoods all across the county north of Route 50. There are houses, churches, and schools in just about every district who are losing their right to appeal under this amendment. This is a problem. Our neighbors shouldn't lose their rights in the same way that I'm about to. To do my part, I sent out 400 hand-addressed letters via United States Postal Service to some of the people that are affected, so at least they would know what's going on and could appear here if they wanted. As we all know, this legislation has nothing to do with the suitability of medical cannabis. I respect Mr. Doty's testimony and all the heartfelt testimonies that we've heard, and I don't think anybody would argue the point. This is about passing good zoning laws to preserve the rights of people and don't take them away. At the end of the last session, I recall Mr. Hager advising the council to legislate for the larger community, not for the interests of a single company, and I echo this sentiment. I ask you to please retract the amendment or submit a better one that serves the greater good of Anarundel. Thank you.
Mr. Smith, thank you very much for your testimony. Appreciate it. Stephen Vandevander?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Good evening. My name is Stephen Vandevander. I live at 814 Annapolis Road in Gamberles. And let me say, judging by the turnout, that it is great to see just how passionate this community is about zoning, because that's what this bill is about. It is not about the legalization of medical cannabis. If it were, I think we could all be out of here by 8:30, since I'm sure the vast majority of folks here support the availability of medical cannabis, myself included. But this bill is about zoning, plain boring old zoning. It's about whether or not residents of a community get to have a say in what gets put next to them, literally next to them. The bill as proposed means that a person, school, or church could find their properties zero feet from a medical marijuana dispensary and not have the right to so much as challenge the placement there on a proximity basis. I don't think that's right. I pay a lot for the privilege of living here in Anarundel, and I like to think this council values my voice, especially when it comes to the placement of industrial businesses adjacent to neighborhoods. So please, by all means, let's work together to increase medical marijuana availability in Anarundel County, but please do not strip the rights of citizens to voice their concerns in the process. Vote no to 7718 as currently amended. Thank you. And I have some handouts here for everyone, which is just a sampling of W-2 zoning areas that are bordering our residential zones. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Vandevander. Appreciate it very much. Mr. Melanson?
Hello. I am Kevin Melanson, currently residing at 51 Regatta Bay Court, Apartment 446 in Annapolis, Maryland. And I'm here today as a concerned citizen regarding the newest amendment to bill 7718. I am by no means a zoning expert, but I was confused by the special treatment that W-2, as I recently learned, light industrial areas are receiving. I decided to do some research to determine if there was a justification to the special treatment, and in my honest opinion, I have found none. While there are rules and regulations regarding specifically how a location becomes zoned W-1, W-2, or W-3, cannabis dispensaries can be located on any of the three. Again, I wondered if this was due to a shortage of W-2 zones located in Anarundel County. But no, using a rough search of areas north of Route 50 through a publicly available map tool, GIS-world2aacounty.org, I found roughly 43 areas zoned W-1, 39 areas zoned W-2, and 20 areas zoned W-3. If this leaves you scratching your head to ask why W-2 zones are so special, welcome to the party, the pizza arrives at eight. I ask that you reevaluate the latest amendment to 7718 and look into alternative solutions that are acceptable by both parties. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your testimony. Mr. Maris, Nathan Maris?
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Nathan Maris. I just moved to Brunswick, I just moved from Brunswick, Maryland to Bowie, Maryland, and I work for Open Path Products on General's Highway. I want to say upfront that I am 100% in support of medical marijuana. It helps a lot of people, I understand that. It's just that this is not the right location, nor is this the right way to go about achieving easier access. I would like to, I would like to take a step back and look at this entire process from a different perspective. If you look at any number of polls, it is easy to see that many people do not trust their government. The main reason for this is because there is a pervasive sense among the electorate that their representatives do not serve the people. Specifically, there's a widespread acknowledgement that special interests always seem to get what they want, while the citizens are frequently left hanging out to dry. It is important that folks trust that their representatives will make thoughtful and balanced decisions, and that's the problem here. From my perspective, it just seems like the system is being worked so that one particular company is going to be granted special exceptions to a zoning law so it can locate where it wants. We have already seen a compromise to this bill that we thought everyone was happy with. The people who live in this district don't want it, and there is already another medical marijuana dispensary that has been approved in Annapolis about a mile from the currently proposed location. Why is the zoning exemption being pushed so hard? It doesn't make sense to me. If you want to increase access, then we should have laws that encourage sites to be spread across the county. And so this effort to amend the zoning laws, seemingly to favor a specific company, is a perfect example of why people don't trust their government. To make matters worse, in this case, the special exception to the zoning laws will actually entirely remove the rights of citizens and some schools to object. It just leaves a bad taste in your mouth, and at least for me, it makes me wonder what's going on behind the scenes sometimes. Tonight, you have a chance to stop this. You have a chance to take one little act that will aid in reversing the malignant distrust so many folks have in their government. We have already seen a reasonable compromise that would balance the interest of the medical marijuana industry with the interest of its citizenry, so I encourage you to vote no to this bill as currently amended. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Maris. And thank you all. We're going to dismiss this panel. I'm going to call six more names, please. Mr. Cassandra, or excuse me, Raffaela Cassandra. Chad Angell, Max Rose, Stephen Kratzler, Terry Metro, and Joseph Rutter. Ms. Cassandra?
Yes, sir.
Good evening.
How are you?
Are you familiar with the myth of Cassandra?
I'm sorry?
Are you familiar with the myth of Cassandra?
Yeah, she predicted the future. No one believed her.
There you go. Go ahead.
My name's Raffaela Cassandra. I live at 1703 Bay Ridge Avenue in Annapolis, Maryland. Two weeks ago, I addressed the council about my concerns about the exception clause for the dispensary location on General's Highway because of the school bus stop in the adjacent parking lot as it opened a direct line of sight between schoolchildren and the proposed dispensary. The bill I was speaking to was tabled because of the amendment made to Bill 7718, which allows a dispensary to be located in a W-2 industrial zone without any restriction to neighboring facilities. My concerns are considerably heightened with the introduction of the amendment. The amended bill allows for a dispensary to be located directly adjacent to schools without any buffer zone and without the right of public appeals process. This runs a direct contrast to the arguments that were previously made for the dispensary by Mr. Blumenthal, that the location on General's Highway would be a safe location because it was not in a direct line of sight to the public at large. There are four schools in Anarundel County that will be affected by Bill 7718 as amended. Salium Elementary School in District 3, the Severn School Chesapeake Campus in District 5, Monsignor Slade Catholic School in District 2, the Chesapeake Science Point Charter School in District 1. The bill as amended would leave school officials, educators, and parents without a right to advocate for their students. It is our job as members of the community to make sure that we are always able to protect and advocate for the security and education of the next generation. This includes being heard about the concerns about where a student is being educated and what the student is exposed to on the way to and from school. Please consider the rights of these students and the rights of those who advocate for them, and vote no on Bill 7718 as amended.
Thank you very, very much for telling us the future. Appreciate it. Mr. Angell?
Angell.
Angell, thank you, sir. Good evening.
Thank you, sir. My name is Chad Angell. I live at 322, sorry, I live at, my name is Chad Angell. I live at 322 Delaware Avenue in Glen Burnie. And I understand that the word zoning ordinance probably makes everybody a little sleepy, so I'll try to be super quick with my statement. But with respect to the amendment on Bill 7718, which I'm here to oppose today, I wanted to share my concern about how I keep hearing the conversation continually being misdirected. This amendment removes an Anarundel County citizen north of Highway 50 right to a public hearing if a dispensary is built in one of three types of industrial zones. The proposed amendment creates, in effect, a separate class of citizen having distinct rights for residence in the north of the county versus the south. That's just an injustice. I'm opposed to this as it will immediately impact my life and my community, but tomorrow it could quite easily impact anyone else's as well. Having our government tell us whose voices do and do not matter is the issue here, and that is why it is important not to be distracted by arguments that are emotionalized about medical cannabis. If medical cannabis patients are the center of this bill and amendment, then why doesn't the bill affect all areas of the county instead of just the area north of 50? Why limit it to one type of industrial zone rather than all? That is not a conspiracy theory, but that is a logical concern about fairness of law. This is not playing politics but voicing facts that are being obfuscated by hot political issues. I ask that we use common sense, reason, and exercise our natural rights as citizens to question our elected government and their motives. We shouldn't all be doing so as our civic duty. I ask my community not conflagrate this conversation with the legality of medical cannabis and vilify these counterpoints in the court of public opinion. And I ask the council not remove the northern community's right to speak after tonight and vote against this amendment. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you, Mr. Angell. Appreciate your testimony very much. Mr. Rose, Max Rose?
My name is Max Rose. I live at 1903 Town Center Boulevard in Annapolis, Maryland, and I want to thank you all for taking the time to come out tonight and to listen to my concerns. I'm concerned that this legislation limits the opportunities for public appeal. This Bill 7718 will make it so that a medical marijuana dispensary doesn't have to acquire setback variances. Part of the variance process allows for appeals, and these appeals are a vital opportunity for the public to have their say in what happens in their community. Medical marijuana is an emerging industry that has the potential to greatly improve the lives of millions of Americans. It is also a controversial issue, and as these dispensaries are integrated into our community, there must be opportunities for people to speak up and raise the concerns that they may have. There must be a dialogue and a forum where the issues and problems specific to our community can be addressed. We must not stifle the conversation. We must not pass legislation that will eliminate the opportunity for the public to be advocates for themselves. People should have the ability to raise concerns when they see problems. This bill, as it is currently amended, prevents that from happening. Medical marijuana is an important issue, and we need to make sure that our community has the tools and platform required to make sure that it is introduced in a safe and beneficial and responsible manner. Thank you for taking the time to hear my concerns today. I would conclude by imploring you not to pass this bill as it is amended, as it will limit the opportunities for other people in the future who may also have concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rose. Appreciate your testimony. Stephen Kratzler?
Good evening. I'm Stephen Kratzler, 1708 Woodlow Road. My home is under a mile from the site of a proposed dispensary that would be enabled by Bill 7718 as amended. I'm testifying in opposition to this bill, even though I'm in favor of making cannabis available for people with certain medical conditions. The community of Woodlow has about 40 homes, and some of them are less than half a mile from the proposed dispensary site. Furthermore, there are homes on the other side of General's Highway that are so close the applicant required variances for the proposed site, and I think those variances were granted inappropriately. Bill 7718 as amended would violate the council's intent and the state's intent to keep dispensaries from being clustered together. We don't need another dispensary so close to the one being built on West Street. Furthermore, Rolling Knolls Elementary School is not far from the proposed site, and there are bus stops for at least two schools in the bowling alley parking lot, which is so close to the proposed site that children will be walking and gathering within sight and smell of the dispensary's parking lot. Would you be comfortable dropping off your kids there? The supporters of this dispensary want us to believe that the customers will not be stoners, but what's going to happen if and when recreational cannabis is approved? Kind Therapeutics wants to have their foot in the door, ready to go full blast in our backyards. Please don't enable this disaster. Please vote against Bill 7718 as amended. Thank you.
Mr. Metro, thank you very much for your testimony. Mr. Rutter? Oh, excuse me. That was Mr. Kratzler. Excuse me. I'm now calling on Mr. Metro. I apologize.
Metro, I live in Rolling Knolls neighborhood. I'm here to speak against the amended 7718 for a few reasons. First, I don't feel that this dispensary should be built across the street from an elementary school, and I know that there's argument that it's down the street, but I don't think it should be able to be built that close to an elementary school. And, you know, I don't want to sound not in my backyard, but I just don't think it should be that close to homes. I saw the dispensary, I drove past a dispensary in Edgewater, and it looks like a nice complex, and I don't see a whole lot of houses, and I know that there's no schools there. I'm not against medical marijuana. I think definitely, I've talked to a lot of people out in the line out there, and there's a lot of benefits. I know that it helps people, eases pain, extends life. It's a miracle drug, but I don't know if I should, we should have this across the street from an elementary school and homes. And the additional traffic right now with the retirement community across the street from Rolling Knolls, it's, you take your life in your own hand getting out of the neighborhood. We're trying to get a light with the state, but that's the state highway administration, and that's like pulling teeth. So we're going to add this place, and it's going to add additional traffic, and I brought a picture with me, a blown-up picture of the traffic from last Wednesday, and it was a line of cars, and it's only going to get worse with the dispensary there. I'm sure the people that own the dispensary are great people, but I think that there's a better location.
Thank you, Mr. Metro. Appreciate your testimony.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Rutter?
Good evening. Jessup Rutter, currently a planning consultant. I served from 2003 to 2006 as the Planning and Zoning Officer in Anarundel County, and prior to that as the Howard County Planning and Director for many years. One of the major efforts while I was head of Anarundel County Planning and Zoning was the rewrite of the zoning code for the first time in 35 years. A key part of that effort was to highlight the inconsistencies in the code and correct them to provide uniform treatment. While medical marijuana dispensary laws were enacted subsequent to my tenure at the county, my professional opinion as a planner, such uses should be treated in a uniform way in the districts where they are allowed. Presently, the dispensaries are allowed in C-2, C-3, C-4, W-1, and W-3 as special exception uses, while in W-2, the interim district between W-1 and W-3, it's a conditional use basically as a right with no public hearing process. That present inconsistent treatment doesn't make sense from a planning perspective, and the benefit of the special exception process is that it allows an independent official, county hearing officer and then Board of Appeals, to evaluate evidence as presented in the public hearing here from the staff report, the proponents, and the opponents. The hearing officer then evaluates the evidence based on the criteria adopted by the county council. Issues, there's a thorough vetting of the issues and the rights of due process for all parties. That's the new, now the process, except in W-2. Simple solution is to treat W-2 the same as all other districts where medical marijuana dispensaries are allowed and require the proposed facility to go through the special exception process. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rutter. Appreciate it. Thank you very much. Want to dismiss this panel. Thank you for your testimony. Then call five names. Kenneth Hatch, Mark Zablotny, Chrissy Bernazani, Dan Bernazani, Christopher Jensen. Good evening, folks. Mr. Hatch?
Ladies and gentlemen, members of the council, I'm Dr. Kenneth Hatch, H-A-T-C-H. I live at 542 Pawpaw Cove Court, Annapolis, 21401. Our subdivision is Saltworks on the Severn. We're water access to Severn to the Saltworks Creek, which adjacent to the Cabin Branch. The Cabin Branch is where they did a million-dollar, almost a million-dollar restoration at the corner of Best Gate Road and General's Highway, and we spent a lot of time cleaning up, getting all the dirt, tires, junk out of there to clean up the area, and now they want to rezone this area and put this facility in here. I'm a retired doctor. I have no problem with cannabis. My late wife died from lung cancer. I'm very aware of end-of-life treatment. Fortunately, unfortunately, cannabis was not available. She died in Florida at the time. I don't have a problem with the cannabis. I have a problem with the location. Yesterday, I drove by the Edgewater facility, and it's approximately three miles from the West Street facility. That's two. And then from the West Street facility to the proposed 178 is approximately one mile. There is a need for the product. We don't need three locations as a crow flies within about three miles. Again, I think it's a mistake to change the zoning. There are environmental issues. We went out of our way to clean up that area, and we don't need extra traffic. I've been in the area since 1977. That's a long time. I've watched Best Gate Road develop from a little sneaky road through the county to that major thoroughfare. Traffic, as other people said, is a major problem. You cannot legally come out of there and make a left turn. We've already had one major accident in front of the Brightview Assisted Living thing, which is just barely up the street. And this gentleman before mentioned about the schoolkids getting on the bus at the bowling alley. We don't need this facility near the school bus stop. Thank you for your attention. We should reject this amendment.
Thank you, Dr. Hatch. Appreciate it. Mr. Zablotny?
Good evening. Good evening. Mark Zablotny, 1050 Carriage Hill Parkway. I'm here representing General Highways Council Civic Associations, represent approximately 4,100 households, 9,000 residents. First off, the past two council meetings, we've heard numerous Kind Therapeutics supporters testify about their support of miracle marijuana. I have received hundreds of emails from General's Highway residents. Very, very few people are opposed to medical marijuana. This is about location only. The overriding question I get from these emails is why does Mr. Walker have so much influence in his hearings? He has no constituency in the district that Kind Therapeutics is trying to locate. His district will not be affected by any of the aspects of Bill 7718. Hell, I mean, it's political zeal to help one dispensary. Mr. Walker has put other areas of Anarundel County in a shadow. For instance, over 150 households in Mr. Smith's district are losing their rights. This is by Ms. Ann Coldstock, pointing out that Mr. Walker's amendment allows dispensaries in W-2 industrial areas to locate directly adjacent to homes and schools and effectively removes their ability to appeal. What will happen to these people's property values and general peace of mind? The council had a work session last month and came up with reasonable fixes to the issues involved in 7718. Why is all this work totally disregarded? I'm running out of time here.
Take your time.
Okay. It's occurred to me now, it's time for some statesmanship. Time to reject the amendment, time to look what the future may hold vis-à-vis cannabis, and allow the next county council to take the time necessary to sensibly deliberate this chaos for the benefit of all county residents. Most of you will not be in the next council, though many of you are running for other elective offices. I urge you, as you exit this phase of your political careers, to do so with your heads held high because you've done the right thing for the county. That is statesmanship. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony, Mr. Zablotny. Appreciate it. Chrissy Bernazani, good evening.
Bernazani, thank you. Chrissy Bernazani, 27, Enclave Court in Annapolis. And I admit, I know very little about zoning, so this has been quite an eye-opener for me, and I really appreciate the opportunity to learn. But it's really no secret how Anarundel County has been treating medical cannabis dispensaries who have been given the license to operate here by the state. So it's really no surprise that we end up in this debate where these companies have been forced into these situations where they're fighting for their lives. Like I said, it's really no secret how Anarundel County has been treating these companies. And it's also no secret how some of the council members feel about medical cannabis dispensaries. And as a clinical director for two medical cannabis dispensaries, we have one dispensary in Jessup, we have one dispensary in Southern Maryland, I really like to report the kind of people who hang out at our medical cannabis dispensaries are elderly patients, patients with multiple sclerosis, patients with cancer, pediatric patients, and I'm very happy to see that the debate on the utility of medical cannabis doesn't seem to be the issue. But Anarundel County has made it so difficult, so, so difficult, and these companies have been fighting for over a year, or close to a year probably, to get themselves up for an operational. My company has been operational since December, and I'm proud to say that Howard County has seen a drop in opioid overdose rates. I can't say that medical cannabis has had anything to do with it, but I would like to think that it probably has, since nationwide we've seen a reduction of opioid fatal overdose deaths of 25% in states that have medical cannabis laws on the books. And I'm sad to say that Anarundel County has not seen that benefit, as reported that to date, as of 9/7, our opioid overdose rate has increased by 38%. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Appreciate it. Mr. Dan Bernazani?
Yeah, Dan Bernazani, 27, Enclave Court. So it seems almost unanimous that, you know, probably 90%, 95%, it would be fair to say, of people in Anarundel County and around this industrial park where this dispensary would go are in favor of it. It does seem very much to be a "not in my backyard" type of issue. As my wife said, that the type of people that frequent a dispensary are, they're not the dregs of society. They're everyday people like you and me. And as far as the location being near a school bus stop or near residence or churches, I can't see people leaving church and going over to the dispensary, or kids getting off the school bus and, oh my God, they're in line of sight of a dispensary. That probably says Kind Therapeutics and nothing else. And if they were to go over and try to get in that dispensary, they'd be turned away immediately because the restrictions of getting into one are very difficult. You have to be registered on the Medical Marijuana Cannabis Commission's site, so you can't just use a fake ID. You'd have to be able to hack into the site and get your name listed in order to get in there. So I don't see kids hanging out in industrial parks. It's hard enough to get them into a regular park with lawns and playgrounds and ballfields, let alone, you know, frequent an industrial park. So if not in industrial park, where? You know, out, and as far as other dispensaries being located nearby, well, that'll just bring competition, and that's a good thing, I think we can all agree, because that brings prices down, makes it more affordable for the people that need this life-changing, life-saving medicine. Thank you for your time. I know you guys have a difficult job, and you hear opposing views, and you got to incorporate that with your own experience, and I just want to thank you. that with your own experience, and I just, I just want to thank you. I know it's very difficult for you to do, and thank you for your service.
Thank you very much. Can I ask you a question, Mr. Bernazani?
Yes, sir.
You used the term "people frequent your facility." Your wife used the term, I take it that's your wife?
Yes, sir.
Your wife, your wife used, your wife used the term "hang out." Give me some, give me some context. Do people hang out at the facility, or they come and get their?
Are you asking me or my wife?
I can speak to it.
I can speak to it.
I'm asking you.
Okay, well, I've been to my wife's facility in Jessup, and guess what? It isn't an industrial park, and so you have to drive back there to reach it. I imagine most of the people coming to the dispensary, if it's an industrial park off of General's Highway, would, would drive to get there. Again, the local residents is-
Where I'm going, where's, do they stay there? The hangout, hangout gives me the idea that they stay around a while.
No, I'm just saying that's, so, kids that live in the neighborhood, I don't, I can't see them hanging out in the parking lot in front of a dispensary, is what I'm saying.
No, but I'm talking, I'm sorry, I'm talking, but me, I am going to ask you a-
The customers, the customers, I've been to, I've been to her dispensary, both of them. The customers, after they come in and they receive their product, they go home, just like you're going to a pharmacy, you pick up your prescription of opioids, or whatever, and then you go home.
Okay, ma'am, is that right?
That is correct.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you for clarifying that. Mr. Jensen.
Hello there. My name is Christopher Jensen, 3005 Solomon's Island Road in Edgewater, and I'm the owner and founder of Monosupply Company, which is the medical cannabis store that everybody's been referencing so far. I'm here in favor of less restrictive zoning laws here. Quite frankly, in doing so, I'm doing so at the benefit of my competition, and I'm doing it because it's the right thing to do. Last time I came with all kinds of facts and figures, this time I'm not. I, I'm happy to share all that with you. I will tell you that your number of opioid overdoses continues to grow. I've seen over 1,000 patients so far, and more than half of them are for severe and chronic pain. I've had conversations with many of them, and I'll tell you, if you've ever tried to drive from Solomon's Island Road up to General's Highway and drive across the peninsula there, you're looking at, during rush hour, 45 minutes an hour. So we're all worried about not in my backyard, but I, I'm going to tell you opioids is diminishing returns, and even if you are getting a legal prescription for opioids, what happens with my patients is if it's more convenient for them to go pick up their prescription from a CVS that are located everywhere, or drive an hour to a dispensary, they're going to choose CVS. Convenience matters in these things, and that's unfortunate because opioids are diminishing returns, and it got us in this problem in the first place. So I'd like you to think about that. Everybody's worried about how close these dispensaries are, but if you look out General's Highway, there's nothing for a long way. It's all the way out to the airport. It's shameful how difficult it's been to, to get open here. It took me almost two years after having a piece of property that needed no variances, that needed really nothing, and it took me two, two years to get open in this county. There's only two in the entire county, and I'd ask you to please think about that and, and think about passing this for less restrictive.
Thank you very much, Mr. Jensen. Thank you. I want to dismiss this panel. Is there anybody else? This is going to be my last call. Is anybody else to testify on this matter? Please come down at this time. Okay, we'll take the first. I'm recognizing that there's more than six, so I'll make another call. So, one, two, three. Okay, we'll take one more. Here he, here he comes. Okay. Sir, can we start with you?
How's everybody doing tonight?
Good, doing great. Thank you.
Not that it matters, but last year, the governor gave me a citation thanking me for being an entrepreneur in the state. I've got a lot of awards as a developer, and I serve on the Washington County Executive Committee for Economic Development Commission. I'd just like to say that no matter where this company moves, there's going to be people that come out against the company. It's, it's just going to happen. But a company like this, with its, with its leadership, the owner was Woman Business of the Year in Baltimore in '07. You guys are getting a nice company that's going to have a nice location, and I've been out to the location. It does appear that there's no homes right around the location. It seems like an empty space. I think it only serves as a economic development tool for, for Annapolis and for this county. I mean, I think it's a positive thing, and I urge you guys, I understand everybody that's against it, but anywhere they go, the same, other folks are going to come out the same way. I, I think it's a positive thing for the county. I think it's a positive economic development tool, and I urge you guys to, as elected officials, I know how hard your job has to be, and I know you have a lot of people that, you know, no matter which way you go, there's going to be people that disagree with you. But I can tell you, I think this is a positive thing, and I think in the end it'll be looked at positively, so I say vote yes to the amendment and move forward.
Thank you for your testimony. I neglected to ask you to say your name at the beginning, so-
Mike Fitzgerald.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Sir, name and address.
Yes. My name is William Knight. I live at 39 Water Street here in Annapolis. And I'm coming to you as someone who, I would say, I'm supportive of medical marijuana. I'm supportive of access to it, and I think it's an important issue. But I also come as a supporter of the right to petition the government for the redress of grievances. And so I encourage the county council to a bill, to oppose Bill 7718 in its current amended form. It will tip the scales away from local residents and toward the dispensaries, denying residents any appeals process for the siting of dispensaries in certain particular zones. Our government was constituted over 200 years ago to balance the needs of different groups and their legitimate rights. One key element of this is our ability as citizens to petition our government for a redress of grievances, which is protected by the First Amendment. This is manifested by citizens' rights to advocate for themselves at their legislative bodies, but also by the public comment and appeals process built into many governmental functions, such as zoning and planning decisions. In excluding marijuana dispensaries located in a particular zone, W2, from the appeals process, the bill both creates a special exemption under law for certain businesses in certain locations, and it deprives the neighbors of these businesses of their voice in the planning and zoning process. To preserve the spirit of republican government and the voice of all of us in its decisions, I encourage the county council to reject Bill 7718 in its current form.
Thank you very much for your testimony, sir. Appreciate you making a constitutional argument, a very courageous one. Thank you very much. Yes, sir.
David Gertz, 1010 Stony Lane, Crownesville. I'm very much for this bill. Actually, I live off of General's Highway, and I've grown up there as my grandparents had a house there, so I've seen the area change. But I've also been a professional engineer for the last 20 years, and I was just curious about the particulars of the site, because it seemed that the complaints from the last meeting were directed at traffic and access and elementary schools and important things, right? So, so you've got an existing parking lot and a structure that obviously has a vacancy that a business is willing to fill that spot. And there are no homes in the immediate vicinity, however they are across General's Highway. There's traffic, because we live in the state capital. Traffic on General's Highway is there because you have a long stretch of road that basically ends at the mall. So to get to that structure, you basically turn down a road. You really, I don't believe that you could see it from the Bowling Alley parking lot. Maybe you can, but it's not right there on General's Highway. And it is pretty far down the road from Rolling Knolls, where my godkids actually go, so I'm pretty much familiar with the general area. If you travel back in the community that's right behind that, that's Woodlawn, you'd really need to walk down a pretty difficult trek of woods if you really wanted to get there. And I don't think people hang out in front of dispensary. There's no reason. You need a license to purchase the product, and it should be viewed as a medical facility. And right now, the current zoning laws are far too restrictive for such a beneficial business. Thanks.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your testimony. Ma'am.
Hi, good evening. I'm going to try to speak as fast as possible because that timer goes quickly. But my name is Carrie Gardner-Mack. I live at 1988 Valley Road in Annapolis. I'm a resident of Rolling Knolls Community off of General's Highway, and I'm also a patient of the MMCC and in full support of this dispensary location in Bill 7718. I am also a business owner in Annarod County and disappointed by the constant struggle the new businesses have to go through to open up operation in our area. As someone who could be directly affected by the location of dispensary, I find the arguments again, against it to be unsupportive and prejud, I'm sorry, prejudicial. As far as the increase in traffic, where was this concern over traffic when the gym and the swimming center opened up just on the other side of the bowling alley within the past few years? These businesses have hundreds of clients and customers who use their facilities and take their classes on a daily basis. Recent traffic studies prove the dispensary with their average of 30 to 40 customers per day could not even make a dent in the traffic we currently have, from the league nights at the bowling alley to county fair events, Renaissance Festival, and overflow traffic from 97. For the parents arguing that it's too close to Rolling Knolls Elementary, which I live across the street from and where my children attend, I also find this to be discriminatory argument against all MMCC patients. The proposed location for Kind Therapeutics is off the main road. It's hidden behind a building, there's a building in front of it. Unlike the West Street location, which is only 600 feet from the Monarch Academy, is one of the busiest intersections in the area and exposed to everyone that drives by it, including patients of Basai Pediatrics, which my children go to. And in the waiting room and patient rooms, they overlook the dispensary in the parking lot, so it's in clear view. I'm not trying to start an argument against West Street, but if you're really considering the argument, arguments against the General's Highway location, why don't you consider them against West Street? We need to come to terms that these dispensaries should not be feared, but instead accepted as a pharmacy for modern medicine, because that is what they are. They're a legal medical center. Many people suffering from serious conditions depend on them. They're safe, regulated treatments, and convenient locations, and they also need the friendly competition in the area to keep their prices affordable, just in time.
Thank you, Ms. Mack. Appreciate your testimony. Ma'am.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Dr. Tana Clark, and I reside with my family in 2000 A Valley Road in the Rolling Knolls neighborhood. This is a stone's throw away from the General's Highway dispensary, and that's a lot closer than it sounds because I'm a terrible athlete with no arm strength. As a resident and parent of a child at Rolling Knolls Elementary, I'm in full support of the dispensary on General's Highway and a Bill 7718. I'm also a clinical psychologist and owner of Waypoint Wellness Center in Annapolis, and we serve mental health care needs for the greater population of Annapolis and Anarond County. Because I'm well acquainted with the mental and physical health needs of the people of Anarond County, I can say that expansion of medical marijuana dispensaries will fill a vital void for treatment in this community. I have several patients who have their medical marijuana license but cannot afford their medication because there is little competition to drive down prices. Allowing this dispensary will certainly benefit the community in many more ways than it can possibly hurt the community. I beg you to consider the needs of people that are unable to advocate for themselves in a forum such as this because their physical or mental ailments prevent them from being able to do so, and please increase availability for potentially life-changing medications. One more comment after listening to the other speakers tonight. There seems to be an assumption that there are numerous adequate locations for a dispensary to open, but my understanding is that there have been extensive research and limited availability of alternative spots to locate. Also, any alternative locations will likely be subject to similar objections that we are hearing today. Additionally, there is an obvious bias against the presumed clientele of a dispensary. I believe we have a duty to make legal medicines available to the community, and if dispensaries continually have challenges opening in reasonable locations, we will damage small business development as well as availability for this vital medicine.
Thank you, Doc. Appreciate your testimony. Sir.
Hi, I'm Andrew Fox, 550 Rockwood Court, Rolling Knolls. I have several businesses in Anarond County in Annapolis. I'm a father of three. I am in favor of opening up the W2 industrial districts to allow for dispensaries, especially the Kind Therapeutics location off of General's Highway. I believe this location will be out of sight, out of mind for anybody that is not a customer. I believe anyone opposed to marijuana in general should be content that a non-visible site has been chosen for this use. I believe the variances that were previously approved were justified considering the commercial nature of the neighboring residential properties. I do not believe the traffic impact will be as great as what you may hear from others. The entire point of having a certain number of dispensaries dedicated to a district is to serve the local population around them and not to create an influx of people from outside the immediate area. The same traffic concerns were not raised when several quasi-retail businesses were opened in Renard Court over the past several years. There's much-needed competition in the dispensary business. The best-run, most compliant dispensaries will survive, and the other ones will not. This will not be a hangout place for the so-called "those kinds of people." The person sitting next to you may benefit greatly from this use, and who are we to tell them no if they are using the same roads they use daily? We want our dispensaries to be exemplary, and I believe Kind Therapeutics has the team to do it. I disagree with the argument that this will be all but, that this will all but ensure recreational use in Maryland. I will be wholly opposed to that, but that's a fight for another day. I believe Anarond County has foregone a ridiculous amount of tax money that could go towards addressing real traffic and infrastructure issues. I hope this council will take the steps to approve this legislation and move an overwhelmingly favored industry forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Appreciate your testimony. Going to dismiss this group and invite anybody else who wants to come down. I saw there were a number of people.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Smith.
As you invite them down, just because I don't want the massage members, I think the administration, Bernie, thank you for the message. I know this probably isn't the right time, but I don't want them waiting around to the end, so if you're here for the massage bill, it's probably going to be either voted down or delayed and expired, so you're, if you still want to talk when we get to that, that's fine, but it's more than likely going to be voted down this evening. So I just wanted to give them that courtesy so they didn't wait till the end. That's it.
That's okay.
He can say what he wants. I mean, I don't have anything on my table. I mean, it is at the end. I know that.
Mr. Smith, let me, let me take that under advisement just for a minute, all right?
I'm on with the public hearing on this bill, please. Thank you. Sorry, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Blumenthal, good evening, sir. You, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, council members. My name is Harry Blumenthal. I'm an attorney with the firm of Lyft, Walsh &amp; Simmons in Annapolis. I've always advocated through my professional career that zoning regulations should be fair, impartial, and applicable to everyone irrespective of who anyone is or what they own. I'm sort of a property rights kind of person, and I'm proud of it. And I would say, for the most part, this council and your predecessor councils have established rules and regulations that are fair and impartial and can be followed without a great deal of difficulty. Unfortunately, and I think through inadvertence, the situation deteriorated with regard to the W2 zone in this instance. The law said, that you passed, that a conditional use was permitted in a W2 zone. And so with that in mind, I was retained about a year ago to apply for a variance because a special exception wasn't needed in a W2 zone, and proved to the satisfaction of the hearing officer that the variance was warranted. That variance was appealed, which is entirely appropriate under our law, and quite frankly, to be expected in these kinds of matters. But what then happened is that, for whatever reason unknown to me, legislation was passed that said, notwithstanding you've been through the process for years, spent hundreds of thousands of dollars, the client has, you can't pursue what you just won. It disappeared overnight. I've heard many people say today and this evening, this process before you, the bill before you, is not fair. I would tell you that the precursor of it was what happened to anybody in a W2 zone who knew what the law was, abided by it, went through the process, and then literally had the proverbial rug pulled out from under them. Thank you.
Do you want to finish your thought there, Mr. Blumenthal?
Just to say that I've, I've heard that last, both tonight and two weeks ago, that there's consideration of amendment that may make the W2 zone properties also go through a special exception. I have no problem intellectually with a special exception process, because the, the burden is not on the applicant, it's a permissive use, and if the applicant can prove the criteria, the applicant is entitled to the special exception. But a variance goes along with it, and I've never understood this variance, that you have a variance of 1,000-foot separation in North Anarond County, but not in South Anarond County. So passing a special exception does nothing to a property that needs the variance. So again, I'm looking for a process that's fair and equitable, and of course, we all look on both sides of the issue, and there are probably five sides of this issue, to this council to do something. I wanted to give you my, my two cents. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you for your two, two, two and a half cents. Appreciate it, sir. Ma'am, go ahead.
I was going to say, you can have my half of mine, because I'm just going to speak very briefly. I don't really have too much prepared. My name's Christine Boomer. I live at 1982 Glencrest Lane in the Rolling Knolls section, which is the community across the street. And it does seem like this is such a hot topic that, that there's just an awful lot to, to think about and to talk about, and these, all I keep hearing is the, you know, this special exception and that special exception, and, and all the rules broken, maybe the rules were laid out incorrectly to begin with, and, but all these exceptions to get around the rules that they are. I would just encourage to, I'm, I'm in favor of not voting for this exception, and, you know, just because there seems to be so many different angles around this, and maybe take another look at how this can all be processed more fairly than what has happened so far.[1773.26]
I'm here to testify in favor of the bill. I'm here also to dispel a little bit of mystery. I've heard a lot of testimony about traffic. I've been involved in several of the prior cannabis facilities that have been approved in this county, and I can tell you that our research has indicated that traffic will be less with this facility, certainly less than other uses that could be allowed in this zone. Typically, our research around the country, there is no traffic generator in the ITE manual, which is the Traffic Engineering Bible, because it's that new of a use. However, typically around the country, we see that traffic generated by a medical cannabis dispensary is typically half of that of a regular drugstore. All right? Half. Other uses that could go on this site include fabrication, manufacturing, outdoor storage, a fitness studio, a restaurant, a convenience store, a gas station, a lumberyard, a body shop. All those uses have much greater traffic than what's being generated by this facility. Beyond that, I've looked at this site specifically. I've heard a lot of testimony about environmental, and I think Mr. Brenza will also talk a little bit about that. I've heard testimony about this is going to damage Saltworks Creek. Well, in fact, what you have there today is an existing building which has no stormwater management. It has a building and a parking lot with no stormwater management. There was a revitalization project on Saltworks Creek directly adjacent to it some years ago, intentionally intending to improve Saltworks Creek. Great job. Let's put some stormwater management on the site adjacent to it to actually benefit the creek. The creek was designed to take the large volume of water which is coming off this site, which is wonderful. How about we reduce the volume of water going into the creek to actually let that management do what it's supposed to do? Any redevelopment that occurs will have to install stormwater management. That's the key. So in my opinion, you're going to have less traffic and better environmental benefit from the approval of this bill. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony, sir. Yes, sir?
Yes, my name is Tim Brenza, 253 Old Mill Bottom Road, Annapolis, Maryland. I'm a local land planning consultant, and I would want, I'm here to testify on behalf of the bill. I support the bill and wish you would support it, too. There are some that have testified before me and would have you to believe that approval of this bill would result in the degradation of the surrounding environment. I don't believe that's the case. Quite frankly, I believe the opposite is the case, and I believe Mr. Newton is correct. The fact is that this site was built before there were stormwater management requirements in Anarundale County, and if it were redeveloped as proposed or allowed or facilitated in this bill, it would allow for the redevelopment and the improvement of water quality, body institution, of stormwater management requirements that would be required with the site plan. Moreover, this site is an existing septic site. This site, as redeveloped, can connect to the public sewer, which would certainly greatly improve the impacts of septic systems on the surrounding community. The fact that the site is in a priority funding area that was established by the state as far as part of the Smart Growth Initiative makes all the sense in the world. That program was established to allow for redevelopment such as this would be proposed in this bill in areas where that local adequate public facilities exist, and to promote things like redevelopment of existing sites. The fact that this site is already fully developed, and the redevelopment of the site will result in implementation of stormwater management will improve water quality, not be detrimental to it.
Thank you for your testimony, Mr. Brenza. Thank you very much. Yes, sir. Good evening.
Good evening, council members. First, I'd like to thank you very much for the opportunity to comment on this important topic. My name is David Close. I reside at 22333 Ringgold Pike, Hagerstown, Maryland, Washington County, Maryland. I am the president of Kind Therapeutics located in Hagerstown, where we operate a licensed grow and a licensed processor. Prior to my current position with Kind Therapeutics, I was a trooper with the Maryland State Police for 28 years, and I retired as a rank of captain. Much recently, I was a director of the Bureau of Enforcement Compliance for the Maryland Medical Cannabis Commission for two years. In that position, I supervised a staff of experienced investigators that assisted licensees in planning and operating their facilities within the strict compliance requirements outlined in the Code of Maryland Regulations. The program's legitimacy and ultimately the future of the program rests on the Maryland Medical Cannabis Commission conducting routine and thorough inspections to maintain the highest level of voluntary compliance from the industry. The Code of Maryland Regulations narrowly defines a licenseee's responsibility to operate within the regulations, or they risk fines, suspension, or revocation of their license. My knowledge, skills, and abilities in law enforcement and with the Maryland Medical Cannabis Commission is a perfect transition for me to the cannabis industry, and I am here to assure you, all of you here tonight, that I am prepared and committed to maintain the high standards of compliance humanly achievable. Patients statewide are the beneficiary of the cannabis program, a program that improves a patient's quality of life, and has a promise from me as the president of Kind to consistently operate within the regulations and guarantee that patients have access to safe and affordable medical cannabis. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you tonight, and will be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Captain. Appreciate you being here.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Katz.
Good evening. David Katz, 1931 Pendennis Drive, Annapolis, Maryland, attorney on behalf of Kind Therapeutics. First and foremost, I think it's just worthwhile thanking the council. I know this is the second-to-last council session. I know it's pretty easy to sit at this table and try to tell you how to do your job. It's much more difficult to pass effective legislation and work together, and undoubtedly the county is in a better place based on the past four years, so certainly "thank you" is proper. Councilman Perukko, something resonated with me two weeks ago, that you talked about weighing future harm versus present benefit, and listening to the testimony this evening, you know, there was a lot of really key facts, key pieces of testimony that I heard. I thought there was a lot about the present benefit. There was testimony from existing cancer patients as to the quality it provides, as to the quality cannabis provides. There was testimony from current operators as to who their patients are. There also was a lot of discussion and concern about future harm that might be. One thing that clearly was missing from the testimony this evening was hard facts, hard testimony about existing harm. We didn't hear any testimony from anybody that said, "Because of the location of a dispensary, traffic has gotten worse. Because of an existing dispensary, crime has gotten worse." And I believe that you didn't hear that testimony, because it doesn't exist. I truly believe that there is concern over future harm which can quickly be dispelled. So I really request, respectfully, I'm sorry, not really, respectfully request that you pass the bill as it exists today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Katz. Appreciate it very much. Thank you all very much. Going to dismiss this panel. Is there anybody else? Did I see anybody else that still wanted to speak? Please come down. Okay, this is going to be last call. Please come down now, or now or never. Good evening, Mr. Perukko.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and I'm the counsel. For the record, Robert Fuoco, 51 Franklin Street, Annapolis, Maryland. I come here in multiple roles. I mean, I am counsel for one of the opponents in the present appeal of the Kind Therapeutics case, but I'm also a land use attorney, and so I'm speaking to you on both perspectives. And frankly, listening to testimony today was very interesting, because in my memory, it might be the first time or one of the few times where Joe Rutter, former head of the Office of Planning and Zoning, and Harry Blumenthal agreed on a particular issue. And that is that zoning laws should be fair, neutral, uniformly applied. All right? Harry made that same argument in front of the board when we were there for the appeal, which got postponed into the next board session. And so what's interesting to me is this case, this bill is presently proposed, is that it's not neutral. For a neutral bill, there'd just be a bunch of land use attorneys in here arguing about how the zoning law is being changed, or how it should be changed, or whether it should be changed. Instead, we have people on both sides of the cannabis issue arguing for or against the Kind Therapeutics site. The bill says nothing about Kind Therapeutics, and yet everyone here understands this bill as proposed in its current form is going to benefit Kind Therapeutics. That's not fair, neutral, or uniform application of a zoning code. There's no reason for a W-2 zone to be treated differently than a W-1 or a W-3 regarding whether cannabis is permitted. Mr. Blumenthal also said he wouldn't be opposed to going through a public hearing. That's what should happen. If we're going to permit it in a W-2, do it by way of public hearing so there's public participation. Everyone having two minutes of speaking time is not enough to flush out the issues here. You know, a board is better prepared to determine whether or not that applicant should operate from that site. With all due respect, you don't have the time here for people to tell you their concerns or to talk about an operator. You don't have the ability to put conditions on an approval that a board does. So the bill should be amended further to provide for public participation.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Counselor. Counselor?
Yes, Counselor. Mr. Chairman, members of the council, David Plot, One Park Place, Annapolis. I represent Open Path Products, and Mr. Fuoco just made a compelling argument, I believe. I think it's unfortunate that two weeks ago, this bill could have been adopted. Everybody was in agreement. Mr. Trumpbauer made that point. Please don't amend the bill. Everybody who testified supported 7718 because it was opening up more sites that could be appropriate for location of dispensaries. But instead, what happened was there was an amendment which then removed the due process procedures that were ongoing for one particular dispensary. Kind Therapeutics, and the bill's not just about Kind Therapeutics, it's about trying to make a process, all right, where you can accommodate dispensaries, and there's some availability for public review, participation, to evaluate those impacts. We had a bill that was going to increase the number of sites, and that could have been adopted. As we are now, the argument and the concern you're hearing from the residents and from the businesses, because it's not only future businesses, it's existing businesses that are impacted by these facilities, what you're hearing is you're cutting off due process. People are participating in this variance proceeding that's before the Board of Appeals, and guess what? Kind Therapeutics gets a pass. You get your building permit, you don't need to go through any public review process. Mr. Fuoco is exactly right. The public review process before the hearing officer or the Board of Appeals is where the issues about environmental impacts, impacts to businesses, impacts to residents, you know, is there a problem with respect to schools and children? That's where that is evaluated. Why W-2 is not treated as a special exception, like every other district that allows this use, makes absolutely no sense, as Mr. Rutter stated. So I would agree with Mr. Blumenthal that, you know, a special exception process would be appropriate, and would ask you to support that.
Mr. Plot, in your opinion, you've made a due process argument, and people are wearing due process badges, et cetera, so due process has been talked about here quite a bit. In your, and there was a gentleman that actually talked about the right to petition for redress of grievances, which is one of the five freedoms mentioned in the First Amendment. In your view, does the ability to have a public hearing on a zoning issue rise to that level?
I believe that where this council has determined that there should be a public hearing process, albeit a special exception process, or in the case of Kind Therapeutics, it was a determination that because of the setbacks that would be required, there'd be a public review process through the variance proceeding, that indeed, when people are participating in that process, and then it's suddenly precluded in the middle of the process, that that's not fair. So I personally view, as a land use attorney, I think the special exception is perhaps a correct vehicle for evaluation of this particular use dispensaries, because it's the way it's treated in all other zoning districts, and that would be fair and equitable. As Mr. Blumenthal stated, we want fair and impartial zoning regulations, so that makes sense. But I do think that it's a denial of due process where people are participating in the process now, there is a process, and suddenly, because of the amendment, only because of the amendment, not the bill, the original bill was fine. It was going to provide more sites for dispensaries, for Kind Therapeutics. Perhaps they would find a site. But instead, that process has been precluded now as affected the amendment, and if the bill is adopted with that amendment, there's no participation.
But let me just challenge you one way.
Okay.
If that process is stopped or terminated, as you say, but it's done by a vote of the council, is that not due process? We've all been elected, and we've, we represent, we directly represent the people of the county.
I believe the council has the legal authority to do that. You know, is it fair and equitable to do that? I would disagree. Does it arise to a constitutional violation that the council should do that? I'm not going to, I can't opine on that tonight.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. We will now close the public hearing on Bill Number 7718. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 7718 as amended.
Bill Number 7718, An Ordnance Concerning Zoning, Conditional Uses, Licensed Dispensaries Growers and Processors of Medical Cannabis, Special Exception Uses, Licensed Dispensaries of Medical Cannabis.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion at this point?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for the law office. Is there anyone here representing the law office on this bill? Sorry to have you make your walk up here, Mr. Swain. All right. So I've gotten a lot of emails and discussion, and I'm trying to sort through this so I understand, and again, I'm someone who served on the Board of Appeals, but this is new because this wasn't around. But let's start with number one. I hear that traffic is an issue or it's a concern, and of course, we all know General's Highway is a concern no matter what's there, but where can someone appeal traffic? In a building permit? Can an applicant, when you're filing a building permit, can they say that the traffic is not, you know, amenable to the area, it's going to cause problems, and they could file through that process? Yes or no?
Greg Swain, supervising county attorney. The process that they would go through for the development approval would be a site development plan, and there was, you can't appeal the site development plan, but you can appeal the grading permit or the building permit if there is no grading permit associated with it. So there is a right to appeal, and when you appeal either the grading permit or a building permit with a site development plan, that would incorporate all the issues.
Traffic's one of them.
Traffic would be one of them, yes.
All right. Second question, the environment. I know, because I've been back there, I've visited the site, there obviously was a lot of money spent on the stormwater project, and the building that's back there really does have no mitigation right now, and you heard the arguments back and forth today. So my question to you is, if there were, again, this project did go forward, could somebody appeal that, that if it was creating more havoc to the area, you know, or whatever else? I'm just trying to be clear about, you know, the concerns that were raised. They're legitimate concerns. There's millions of dollars or whatever that was spent, obviously, for the cleanup. Now you have something that could change the aspect. Where would they appeal that, or do they have the ability to appeal that?
Well, that would be part of the site development plan and the grading permit or the building permit, but the site development plan would have to comply with the stormwater management regs, which generally require you to reduce the amount of stormwater that's leaving the site pre-construction. So, and result is supposed to be a better result than before construction. In this case, it's really not. There's no construction taking place, but there is a site development plan that would go through.
Okay. And then the last one is the impacts upon this bill or whatever any future council does, or, but in particular, this legislation. There are two dispensary locations allowed in every Senate district, and that's it. Am I correct? Can we clarify that? Because I know...
In District 30, there's three. Lori Rhodes...
Okay. That's what I wanted to be clear about, what's allowed, you know, what area, and go ahead, I'm sorry.
There's been two dispensaries approved for each senatorial district except for District 30.
Okay.
This would be the third dispensary in District 30.
Gotcha. Thank you. I appreciate the clarification. Thank you all.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? I understand there are amendments. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Two.
Amendment Number Two. This amendment eliminates licensed premises of a licensed dispensary of medical cannabis as a principal use as a conditional use in W-2 zoning districts, repeals the conditional use requirements for licensed premises of a licensed dispensary of medical cannabis as a principal use, and adds licensed premises of a licensed dispensary of medical cannabis as a principal use as a special exception use in W-2 zoning districts.
Thank you. Motion to adopt?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Smith?
Mr. Chair, so, you know, this bill has been a topic of discussion for, it seems like, a lifetime, but the reality is, while, you know, we can't, it's hard because we're all humans up here, and so to be objective in this whole process, when we personally have something at stake, we lose that objectivity. But in a real world where we could separate our emotions from our, from the facts or from the reality, there is a gap in how W-1, W-2, and W-3 is treated. But in a real world, where we could separate our emotions from our, from the facts or from the reality, there is a gap in how W-1, W-2, and W-3 is treated when it comes to dispensaries. That being said, unfortunately, this subject, or this bill, kind of ties up two different issues, whether kind therapeutic will be allowed in that area, and whether W-2 should be special exception. So, what I've tried to do was to separate the two of them, because they are two separate issues. A community should have a voice in how a process is deliberated within their area, which is what special exception does. So, this amendment changes that W-2 from conditional to special exception, so that throughout the county, it's consistent in those specific categories. And so, that's why I thought it was pertinent to bring this forward, so that we had the ability for the businesses to still have a means of going through a process, and at the same time, keeping it consistent with other warehouse districts or industrial areas that permit this activity. And so, that's why I submitted this special exception amendment.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Smith? Mr. Marzick?
We support this amendment, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Smith, let me just make sure that I'm clear. This, this just does this one, this- this makes it uniform through all the different-
Correct.
-zoning districts.
Correct.
Classifications, okay. Thank you very much. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Two.
I read the amendment.
Okay, Madam Secretary.
I'll do the vote.
Then please call the roll on Amendment Number Two.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Nay.
Mr. Fink?
Nay.
Mr. Puski?
Aye.
Mr. Trumpbauer?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Nay.
Mr. Peruca?
Nay.
Three in the affirmative, four in the negative, Amendment Number Two is defeated.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Three. Is Amendment Number Three withdrawn?
Amendment, Amendment Number Three.
Mr. Chair.
I'm sorry, Mr. Walker, I was asking you a question while she was reading. My, I was doing two things at once, but, did you want to make a statement?
No, not this time.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, then please read Amendment Number Three.
Is it, actually, before she does, Ms. Tate, is Amendment Number Three necessary at this point?
That's what I'm asking you, Mr. Walker. I thought Amendment Number Three was in response to Mr. Smith's amendment, so that's why we did it.
Okay, fair enough. Then I will draw Amendment Number Three.
All right, as that means the bill is eligible for final vote right now, the way it is.
Thank you. Then Amendment Number Three is withdrawn.
Mr. Chair, can I-
Mr. Walker.
Can I step off? Can we have recess for just a minute?
We'll-
I was anticipating that passing, so.
We're actually in the middle of voting. We don't normally go into recess in the middle of vote.
Yeah, that, we sometimes do things that we don't normally do.
Yeah.
Mr. Walker, you'd like a recess for five minutes?
Yes, just five minutes, please.
We'll have a five-minute recess.
Thank you.
Please take your seats. The Admiral County Council session is now back in session. Mr. Walker, you, we-
Mr. Chairman, we can move forward.
All right. So, Amendment Number Three has been withdrawn. Madam Secretary, we are then in the position to vote on the bill, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 7718.
I read the title earlier. We can proceed to roll call vote.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 7718.
Mr. Smith?
No.
Mr. Grasso?
No.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Mr. Puski?
Aye.
Mr. Trumpbauer?
Mr. Chair, can I explain my vote?
Yes, of course, Mr. Trumpbauer.
Thank you. I don't normally like to pause, but this is a particularly tough one for me. I'm going to support the bill, but before I vote yes, I want to put on the record my disappointment, not only that the original clean bill got amended, but also that Mr. Smith's amendment, which I thought was fair, failed. But I know several of you are voting against the bill, I'm sure you have your reasons, but I support the premise of 7718. I lost the battle to protect against that amendment, but I still do think that it's an important step to open up more areas for dispensaries in this county. But I just wish it didn't have to be like this, I wish we could have passed a clean bill. With that, I will vote yes, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Trumpbauer.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Peruca?
Aye.
Five in the affirmative, two in the negative, Bill Number 77 is amended as amended. Please.
No, no, no. Please. Please. Order, please. I have to admonish you not to do that, all right? Control yourself. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 8418 as amended.
Bill Number 8418, An Ordnance Concerning Zoning, General Provisions, Licensed Premises of Licensed Dispensaries of Medical Cannabis.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Mr. Walker?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to delay the vote on this till the next meeting.
So, you'd like, you're making a motion to hold?
Correct.
There's a motion to hold, is it seconded?
Second.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on a motion to hold Bill 8418.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Well, wait just a second, please. Would you hold on?
You can't hold a bill to kill it. Vote it down. It's not going to work to do that. It's not. If you want to see the page in Robert's books, I'll give it to you.
I'm still working on it. Still working on it.
Can I, I just want to clarify something for the record, because it's been brought up twice tonight. You cannot, you can't hold a bill to kill it.
I understand. The bill expires-
That's not in order. You have to either, you have to-
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman.
Vote it down. It doesn't, it's not dead yet.
The bill, Mr. Chairman, the bill doesn't expire until October 19.
Okay. Well, I just want that to be clear, that, you know, it has to, something has to happen at the next meeting with the bill. It can't just be held on October 19, then held and held.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
The rules are that you vote it down.
Okay, but you're making a presumption that he's holding it to kill it, and that's Mr. Walker is not making that statement.
Correct.
All right. Madam Secretary, would you please call the roll on the motion to hold?
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Mr. Puski?
Aye.
Mr. Trumpbauer?
No.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Peruca?
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one in the negative, the motion to hold the vote on Bill Number 8418 as amended is passed.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 8018 as amended.
They're doing things where on the border right now. They're getting, it's being amended. Okay, I'm sorry, I'm looking for 80. My apologies. Bill Number 8018, An Ordnance Concerning Public Ethics.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Mr. Marzick?
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Bernie Marzick, and the county executive's office with me at table, Mike Botseris, and the county ethics commission, and Lori Blair Klosmeyer from the Office of Law. We would ask you to pass this bill tonight. We support this bill. This bill is supported by the county ethics commission and the state ethics commission as drafted.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Are there any questions for, good evening, Mr. Botseris, Ms. Blair? Mr. Trumpbauer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, I've looked at this bill, I've had a question, and I can't quite figure the answer out, and so, I'm hoping you guys can give me some clarity. And this results, the question results largely from an experience a couple years ago, a few years ago, under a previous county executive, where there was a, the government relations officer, in essence, the position that you're in, Mr. Marzick, was not a full-time employee, was a contractual employee. And it occurred to me going forward that there may exist situations in the future where the county would want to make sure to have that ability as well, and these could include if the government relations officer went out on extended leave during the legislative session or any other time, or perhaps the county executive administration had a particularly ambitious agenda and wanted to bring in some reinforcements to help with state lobbying. So, I just want to be clear, this bill, as it's before us now, that would not preclude the county from being able to do that. Is that correct?
As far as I know, no, but-
I don't believe so, but I don't completely understand your question.
Can the, can, if this bill were to pass-
Yes.
-does the county retain the ability to hire a contract lobbyist to help with the administration's agenda? This administration or a future administration?
So, in prior administrations, they had a person working for the county, and they also hired a contractual lobbyist to do work-
This is subject to the reporting, lobbyist reporting requirements, I think it would be allowed.
Sure. And I understand that there would be, you know, they'd have to test for conflicts and all of that. I just couldn't tell because of all the language around making sure what county employees can and can't do, and whether or not contractual employees are considered employees. So, I'm taking your on-the-record response to be, this bill does not preclude the county hiring a contract lobbyist for its agenda? Best, best, best you can tell at this point?
To the best of my knowledge, I think that's correct, but that would be a decision, an ultimate decision of the commission, not my decision.
Okay, then that's fair.
My reading of the bill does not change any of that.
That's fair. And maybe there will never be a need or opportunity to do that, it just occurred to me that that might be something that we would want to avail ourselves of the opportunity to. So, thank you for clarifying that.
Can I just add a comment? Just a comment?
Oh, yeah, sure.
Lori Blair Klosmeyer, deputy county attorney. Part of that, too, if you're talking about hiring somebody to lobby the General Assembly-
Sure.
-that's going to come under state ethics.
I understand.
Law, so.
As it should, I just wanted to make sure that we didn't have anything that stopped it before it got to that point.
Right, right.
Thank you. Okay, very good. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Trumpbauer. Any further discussion? If not, we will now open the public hearing on Bill 8018. I don't, don't think there's a sign-up sheet. Oh, we do, excuse me. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. It's a flurry of paperwork this evening. Mr. Joe Adivenola and Dave, Dale Waldrop. I'm sure I butchered that name, I'm sorry, sir. Adivenola.
You got it right, thank you. Chairman Peruca? Joe Adivenola, 118 Clover Hill Road. As president of the Anarona County Professional Firefighters Local 1563, I'm a county employee who has been elected to serve as president of the union and provided the ability to administer the union labor agreement with the county. I believe I am exempt under Section 7-7-101A8 of the county code that provides that activities undertaken by a county employee in connection with the employee's official duties are exempt from the reporting requirements of Title VII. It's my job to establish and maintain better working conditions, to defend my members' rights, and advance our interests as firefighters to encourage the principle and practice of conciliation and arbitration and the settlement of differences. It's also my duty to promote and improve the efficiency of the operations of the fire department, to establish wages, hours, and other terms and conditions of employment, and to provide peaceful procedures for the resolution of disputes that arise. I don't use my time, office, or uniform for private gain. I have no personal or financial interest. Therefore, as noted in County Code Article VII, the title does not apply.
Thank you very much for your testimony, sir. Mr. Waldrop?
Dale Waldrop, 876 Claffey Avenue. I'd kind of start out saying what he said, however. I'd also like to say that I don't want to see it to where a union official cannot come to this county council, or an employee cannot come to this county council and talk to you to talk to you about issues. I've been coming to you for the last, well, three cycles now, talking about how short we are. I don't want it to be construed that, well, Dale Waldrop is a lobbyist, so therefore he must register, because then it could possibly silence a voice to where I can come and talk to you and say, look, we're short, we need help. Now, it is through my coming to talk to you that we've started moving in the correct direction, but I don't want to see that for anybody. I mean, we've got county employees, and the last thing we want to do is stymie the opportunity for a county employee to come and talk to you about some form of issue. So, I believe that there needs to be some amendments to this bill and everything, but by and large, I just want to make sure that, you know, the union voice is allowed to be heard. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Waldrop. Appreciate it, sir. Is there anybody, that's the people that have signed up. Is anybody else who wants to testify on this at this time? Please come down, this is the last call for this bill. Seeing no movement, we'll close the public hearing on Bill 8018 as amended. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 8018 as amended.
Bill Number 8018, An Ordnance Concerning Public Ethics.
Any further discussion? There are amendments. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment, I think it's Number Four.
Amendment Number Four. This amendment adds an exemption to the requirements to register as lobbyists or to report certain activities for employees and their exclusive representatives, attorneys, and consultants acting in the course of negotiating employment terms pursuant to Article VI of the county code.
Move to it, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Mr. Puski?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I reached out to some outside counsel, because certainly, there's a lot of changes with this ethics bill, and you just heard the testimony from our bargaining units, which I think, and in many other counties, do not have to register as lobbyists, and I believe this amendment deals with that particular issue. In addition, though, I know there was a concern raised by the administration and Mr. Botseris about this being approved by the state ethics panel and also reviewed by the local Anarona County Ethics Board, and so, I have a future amendment after this that would have a severability clause if not approved by both one of those, both those groups. So, essentially, this amendment addresses the issue that was raised by the testimony. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Puski, or anybody else? Mr. Fink?
The testimony seemed to speak about the actual employees themselves, where this amendment seems to go a little bit step farther and say, hey, if the union hires a lawyer or a consultant, then they would not have to register either, even if they are in fact lobbying. Is that right, to the sponsor?
If you read the amendment, it's acting in the course of negotiating employment terms. So, specifically, if you look at it, it's consultants acting in the course of negotiating employment terms. So, they'd have to have a specific issue that they're representing their union on.
So, if the union hires a lobbyist, that lobbyist would not have to register because of who their client is?
Well, they're employees of the system, which is different.
What about if the union hires Harry Blumenthal? Harry doesn't have to register?
Are they negotiating employment terms?
Yeah.
Then, no, I don't think they should.
Okay. So, lobbyist not having to register?
For employment terms.
Got it.
Got it.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Trump.
And maybe Miss Tate can remember this or not, but I can remember I put a piece of legislation in that passed into this council, and we made sure that everybody had to register that was lobbying whatsoever. I mean, we're talking about transparency here. And so, now, suddenly, we have the unions want to turn around and hire Harry, and he doesn't have to report that he is lobbying for them. And I thought the whole part of this whole council was that we were going to be transparent on everything we did. And I just don't understand why would we take away restrictions of someone letting the public know who they're representing? It doesn't make sense to me. And that's what we're doing here. We're hiding people from the public to what they're representing. And I don't understand how we could do this when the whole council completely supported my legislation last time, to turn around and says, "Everybody that registers or acts in the term of a lobbyist has to register that." In fact, that piece of legislation cost... Mr. Blumenthal, I think, was one of the people that turned around that, I think we were saying that he was a county employee or state employee, wherever the case, that he had to register as a lobbyist. And I think, and I'm not speaking for him, I remember him saying that he didn't put his name on a lobby thing, and it was also another guy that we affected in that piece of legislation. And this council was big on transparency, but now you want to kind of just reverse things and take away everybody knowing who's representing who. And I just don't understand why we'd want to do that. It's my piece.
Mr. Pruski.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, first of all, Mr. Blumenthal does not act on behalf of any unions that I'm aware of, so, just for the record.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Fink.
But Mr. Blumenthal could be hired tomorrow by the union. And also, what... I'm just, I guess I'm just not familiar with what a lobbyist has to do to register. What is that process? And what's the... Why is it such a brutal process? I mean, what's the problem?
I'll answer that question.
Please?
Yeah. The process of registering is a one-page, maybe a front-and-back form that just identifies the lobbyist, the person who is employing the lobbyist, what the compensation arrangements are with the lobbyist, and some other technical details about the employer and the lobbyist's duties, when they're going to terminate their representation, et cetera. They do have to file an activity report twice a year. The activity reports have to identify what lobbying activity they undertook, if they expended any money, if they gave any gifts, if they gave any sporting events tickets, if they expended so much in postage, they have to report it, if they were paid so much, they have to report it. So, the activity reports require some additional disclosures. But that's the only way that the commission or anyone else is going to know what the lobbyist's activities are with regard to their interaction with the council or county executive or any other county employee.
That's awesome. So, a lobbyist is not allowed to give us sporting tickets, but a non-lobbiist is allowed to give us sporting tickets. Is that right?
Well, that's too...
Or no, no. A lobbyist would have to report it.
They'd have to report it.
But a non-lobbyist would not.
A non-lobbyist would not, but you, as county council member, would have to report it on your disclosure statement.
So, is there a difference between what a lobbyist can give and what a non-lobbyist can give?
No, they're subject to the same gift restrictions.
So, there's no gift hiding.
Yeah. And by considering this amendment or adopting this amendment, it's the commission's... The commission hasn't come out with a complete... Has not come out with a complete report yet, because we've only had the amendment for approximately a week. However, in reviewing the legislation of the amendment with several commission members, and in reviewing it with Mike Lord, the Executive Director of the State's Ethics Commission, and reviewing it with Ms. Duden, County Attorney, and with Ms. Blair, everyone is of the opinion that this is not going to pass state muster. I mean, it is a step backwards in the lobbying disclosure requirements. And there's no reason to carve out an exception to union representative employees, which is what they are. We already have an exception for employees of the county. We already have exemption for the two gentlemen that testified here today.
That's what I was going to ask. So, Dale and Joe, they don't have to fill this out currently?
They do not have to fill it out.
So, we're just taking it a step farther and saying anyone that's hired...
They do not have to register. Now, we're saying that their attorneys, their representatives, their consultants do not have to register. Then, why don't we take the next step and make it for every attorney, every consultant?
Easy. Don't give us ideas.
Easy.
Then, we won't have any disclosure requirement. So, you know, it's the commission's opinion, my opinion, that it's not going to pass state muster. It's a bad idea. It's going in the wrong direction of this current bill, which is taking a step in the right direction, requiring more disclosures, requiring better protections, and now we're going backwards.
Thank you, Mr. Bossiris. Mr. Pruski.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to follow up with the testimony, because as I stated that, I do agree it should pass state ethics muster. I don't know if you've heard when I first initiated this. And number two, couldn't be said that if the FOP leadership, the Fire Department leadership, Afsmi, or any unit were told to work certain hours, that they couldn't be here, that they could send a representative? Maybe that's some things that are occurring now.
Certainly, they could send a representative, but that representative better register as a lobbyist, so we know if they're giving gifts, or we know how much they're being paid, and we know what their conduct is.
I'm not sure unions are giving gifts. We're making presumptions here. I mean, what I'm trying to say is that, basically, if this muster goes before your commission and the State Ethics Commission, what's the problem? I mean, you may disagree, which I respect that, but what I'm saying is, if this does pass, what's wrong with having the state look at it? You said you talked to a few people, but not the whole committee, correct?
I have not talked to the entire county committee, and the State Ethics Commission does not meet until October 25th, so they cannot give an official opinion until October 25th. Why can't this amendment be held and made a separate resolution after the passing of this bill?
This council won't be here. In addition, to be frank, this bill was brought forward very quickly for me to review. I'm going to be honest with you, this should have been brought months ago. And I don't know why it wasn't brought sooner. Again, I don't have the process, but, you know, I have it in front of me, and I looked to outside counsel, and that was recommended to me on the amendment. So, I'm just telling you, I got it to you right as soon as I got it. But what I'm trying to say is this, that respectfully, if you disagree, would you not agree if this passed that the severability clause, which we're willing to put in, that the State Ethics Commission says no, that you'd be okay with that, because it's an null and void?
How is that process going to work, though? I saw the amendment that was drafted.
Sure.
Which says something about 45 days, that if it's not approved, then it gets stricken. However, if a portion is approved, then it stays in.
Well, they meet on October 25th, and you did reach out to them, so I'm assuming they'd be able to discuss it by that point, wouldn't they?
No, they'll be able to discuss it on October 25th and probably give us an opinion.
Sure.
But if the opinion disapproves part of it, or takes issue with the language, or one particular exemption, then the entire amendment has to be rewritten. How are you going to do that post-legislation, post-acceptance of the amendment? Is it going to be an all or nothing? It's either going to fail, or it's going to pass? Suppose they come back and say, "This portion's okay, but this portion's not okay." Are you going to allow them to rewrite our law? I mean, it's...
Miss Tate, do you...
You're putting the cart in front of the horse here. I mean, I'm not saying we can't do it the way you want to do it.
Sure.
The other issue is it's in the wrong section of the code, in my opinion. It should be under the lobbyist exemption section, which is under Title VII. You put this section under Title I, which is under the definition of the public ethics law, and as such, you can read this to suggest that county union officials aren't covered by any public ethics law under Article VII at all, not just the lobbyist's registration, but any public ethics law. And that is easily seen by, you know, Section Number Two, the paragraph Number Two. What does it mean by reports of conduct, activities, or speech? We've never controlled speech. Why is that even in there?
Miss Tate? Did you want to make some...
No, I didn't.
Oh, excuse me. I'm sorry.
Did you want to add anything, Miss Tate?
In reference to...
To what Mr. Bossiris is saying, it's in the wrong section of the code, or related to the severability clause that we're putting in?
I don't have any comment on the severability clause. That's why there's an amendment that's going to be entertained, I think, in a second on that. With regard to the placement in the code, that primarily was related to subsection B two, because it doesn't necessarily relate to lobbying. And I, you know, the thought was... And so, the thought was to not put it in there. I'm not going to argue with you, Mr. Bossiris. It seemed like it had a larger application, which is why it was placed in the other section.
I understand that's the effect. It does give it a much larger...
I'm not going to have a debate. It's Mr. Pruski's amendment.
I'm not arguing with you, Miss Tate.
And you can take it up with him.
I'm not arguing with you.
I didn't write it, so, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'm saying, if you want to do this, there's a proper way to get it done, but this is not it.
Yeah. As far as I'm concerned, if you want to argue, everybody's fine to argue. That's what we're here for. That's...
And I don't mean to argue, Mr. Chairman. I'm not trying to be argumentative. Although, as an attorney and 31 years of commercial litigation experience, that's tend to what...
You know how to do it, right?
This is not like...
I understand. I was going to ask Mr. Walker and then Mr. Marzick.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Bossiris, it's my understanding that during the... I don't know how familiar you are with the union negotiating process, but my understanding is that, and maybe Ms. Blair can speak to this better than you, but it's my understanding that from time to time, the county hires attorneys on employment issues that we bring in from the outside to support the negotiating process. Is that correct?
That are involved in the negotiation process?
Correct.
That's my understanding.
Okay. And Mr. Bossiris, are you familiar with whether or not those attorneys have registered as lobbyists?
I'm not. Mr. Walker, I'm not. I would assume that they are.
So, the county has lobbyists that we hire, or attorneys that we hire, to represent us, that aren't required to register?
But they're attorneys...
I'm just asking the question if they are or they aren't.
Well, I don't think they're lobbyists in the sense of lobbyists. They're legal representation extra...
Right.
Apart from attorneys in our office that would represent the county. They represent the county in the way our office represents the county, but they're... They come from the outside with an outside expertise in labor negotiations. So, it's not really a lobby. They're actual representation.
Right.
So, they wouldn't have to register as lobbyists.
So, the county... So, the employees' attorneys have to register, but the county's attorneys don't?
I think what the point here is, I mean, to register as a... For an attorney to have to register as a lobbyist, you would be in hiring an attorney to be a lobbyist, to come in and influence the acts of the council or the county executive, which is different than actually legal representation. The union could have an attorney that represents them in court, that represents them in...
I'm all aware. I'm just making a point.
Arbitration or something like that, who would not necessarily be a lobbyist.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Walker. Mr. Marzick, did you want to sum this up?
Sure. We are adamantly opposed to this amendment. I think this... I was trying to think of the analogy, but several people have used it, but this really creates a loophole for special interests to easily drive through in the county code, where there is no reporting required for a lobbyist for a select group. Not sure why it's this group, but we agree with your premise, Mr. Pruski, that county employees should not be required to register. I think that's... We all can agree on that. But the concern comes in with adding in when they hire a lobbyist to lobby the government and then not being required to report. So, we would oppose this amendment.
If I could make one other comment? Because Mr. Pruski talked about the amendment, the next amendment, which is going to subject this to the approval of the State Ethics Commission. The problem is, it's not in the same amendment. So, if this amendment passes and the other one doesn't, then we have an issue...
There's a problem with the form of it.
There's a problem there, yeah.
Okay. All right. Mr. Pruski, anything further? Any other questions? Anything further, Mr. Pruski?
No. I'm just going to add again that this is being introduced, and I'm asking both amendments to pass, obviously, and I respectfully appreciate the work that's been done on this bill. But understanding the testimony that was brought forward, and also, as Mr. Walker pointed out about representation, I think that that's the key.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Fink.
The testimony that was brought forward is currently the process. They asked for them, for county employees, not to be registered as lobbyists, and that is the current process. They did not ask us to have their lobbyists not lobby. So, all the testimony that was presented before us today is current process, and no testimony that was before us today was asked to not have their lobbyists register. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further? Madam Secretary...
I've got one more question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
If this passes, we go to passage in two weeks. Is that right?
Correct.
And then, if it's vetoed, we won't have an opportunity to override? It's just dead bill?
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, where are we? Please call the roll on Amendment Number Four.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Grasso.
Aye.
Mr. Fink.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Trumpbauer.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Peruca.
Aye.
Four in the affirmative, three in the negative. Amendment Number Four is passed.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Would you please read Amendment Number Five?
Amendment Number Five. This amendment makes the validity of any part of the ordinance contingent upon approval of the State Ethics Commission.
I have a question. There's also an Amendment Six. Mr. Pruski, are you going to proceed with Amendment Five, since we have Six that covers the county as well as the state?
I can withdraw Five and agree to Six if that's...
Okay. But there's no motion to adopt on Five yet, so... Withdraw Five, please.
Say again?
He's going to withdraw on the five.
Withdraw on Number Five.
And move to Six.
Okay.
Amendment Number Five has been withdrawn. Madam Secretary, would you please read the title of Amendment Number Six?
Amendment Number Six. This amendment makes the validity of the changes to Section 71104 of the County Code contingent upon approval of the State and County Ethics Commission.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Pruski.
It's actually our amendment, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, excuse me. I'm sorry.
This is similar to what Mr. Pruski was offering earlier. This is requiring that the section you just... The amendment you just adopted be approved by the State and County Ethics Commissions. If it's not approved by the State and County Ethics Commissions, it will be void.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Do we need a public hearing on this?
No, just call the roll.
Okay. Madam Secretary, would you please call the roll on Amendment Number Six?
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Grasso.
Aye.
Mr. Fink.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Trumpbauer.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Peruca.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number Six is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Secretary.
Thank you.
Bill Number 8018 as amended will be heard on October 15, 2018. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 8518.
Bill Number 8518, an ordinance concerning current expense-budget transfer of appropriation.
Thank you, Mr. Marzick.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, as we discussed at the work session, due to concerns regarding... Sorry. Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Bernie Marzick, County Executive's Office, with me at the table, Stephen Threw from the Budget Office, Christine Romans from Central Services, Lori Blair Klosmeyer from the Office of Law, Carissa Allen from the Department of Aging, Office of Aging. Due to concerns regarding the lack of security in more vulnerable population using senior centers, Aging and Disabilities has asked Central Services to add security guards at all eight senior locations. Bill 8518 transfers the necessary funds to add these security guards. The annual cost for eight security guards and three supervisors at all locations is approximately $300,000. We'd be happy to answer any questions the council has.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Thank you. If not, then we'll open the public hearing on Bill Number 8518. Do we have any signups?
No, no signups.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody who would like to testify on Bill Number 8518? Please come down at this time. Seeing the movement, we will close the public hearing on Bill Number 8518. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 8518.
Bill Number 8518, An Ordinance Concerning Current Expense Budget Transfer of Appropriation, Chief Administrative Office, Office of Central Services.
Thank you. There's an amendment. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number One.
Amendment Number One, this amendment adds a supplementary appropriation from Chief Administrative Office, general fund appropriation contingency to the Health Department, general fund appropriation, behavioral health services in the amount of $352,000.
Move to adopt, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Second, thank you very much. Mr. Marzick.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, this amendment adds $352,000 for creating two crisis response teams. One crisis response team would go to help the county's safe stations program, which you all are familiar with, at our fire departments and police departments, or, excuse me, fire stations and police stations. The other team would be assigned to Anarundel County Public Schools and help provide needed emergency mental health services to students there. Jen Corbin from the Crisis Response Team and Adrian Meckler are here for mental health if the council has any questions regarding this specific amendment.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions? Mr. Trumbauer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Support the amendment and the intent wholeheartedly. We had the benefit of the blue letter in the original bill saying that everything checked out and that the department had the funds. This is an additional 352, so we're being asked to vote. We don't have the auditor checking it out. Can you provide us some assurance?
We have the money.
You have the money.
Yes.
Thank you for putting that on the record.
Just for the amendment, and then you'll vote on the final bill?
Of course.
In two weeks for the auditor.
Right, right, but as you know...
Sorry, I don't want to speak for the Budget Office. We have the money.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Stephen Threw, we do have the money.
Thank you. As you know, Mr. Marzick, there will be no opportunity to amend at the next meeting, so before we vote on anything, it's kind of permanent tonight, so I'd just like to be doubly careful. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Trumbauer. Anybody else? Then, Madam Secretary, would you please call the roll on Amendment Number One?
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Grasso.
Aye.
Mr. Fink.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Peruca.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number One is adopted.
Thank you. The Bill Number 8518 as amended will be heard on October 15, 2018. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 8918.
Bill Number 8918, An Ordinance Concerning Zoning Conditional Uses, Special Exception Uses Solar Energy Generating Facilities.
Thank you, Mr. Marzick.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Bernie Marzick, County Executive's Office, with me at the table Lori Rhodes and Phil Hager from Planning and Zoning, as well as Greg Swain from the Office of Law. As we discussed at length at the work session, Bill 8918 repeals the existing solar energy system regulations and adds certain definitions and requirements related to solar energy generating facilities. The restrictions in this bill would go beyond the current rules established by creating three categories of solar energy generating facility, solar energy facilities that balance the demand for renewable energy options by the industry and the customer, as well as protect the county's valuable agricultural and historic resources and other environmental assets. The legislation is based on recommendations coming from the Agricultural Commission. The Agriculture Commission last week voted unanimously to support this bill. I believe you have a letter from the Chair of that commission that was sent to you last week or today. The bill creates permitted conditional and special exception uses for solar and the various zoning designations. It also creates numerous conditions these solar facilities would have to meet in order to locate any different designations. We will offer a technical amendment at the appropriate time.
Thank you.
Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Mr. Trumbauer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Two questions, and let me preface them by saying this, this bill has elicited some interesting response of different people for and against it in a way that I've not experienced before.
I agree.
Some members of so-and-so community are for it, others are against, and it's very hard to intersect what the general consensus is on this bill, which I know my colleague from the Second District often says, you know, you've got it right if both sides don't like it, but I'm not sure I subscribe to that theory. So my two questions are largely to you, Mr. Hager, and I won't belabor them because we had a work session on this and we talked about some of these things. But I understand that there was a meeting recently among you and some concerned members from the community, some of which I think we'll hear from, but I wanted to give you the opportunity, and this related to, I think, the grandfathering provision of the five current projects that have applied, as well as like performance standards and things. And I wanted to give you an opportunity, before we got to the testimony, if there's anything that came out of that meeting, because I haven't gotten much of a report, I just heard it was productive, but did any consensus come out, or is there anything that might be helpful for us that you would communicate about that? Because if it went well, that's a good sign, I think.
Right, right. Good evening, Phil Hager from the Office of Planning and Zoning. Thank you for your question, Mr. Trumbauer. I would echo your comment about this creating a lot of different folks who are allied with one another and a couple of people who you typically expect to be allied that weren't necessarily. And I think that largely stems from the fact that we're talking about trying to shoehorn an industrial use into an area of the county where it's not designed to accommodate, it's not an appropriate use for. At the same time, we're also trying to incentivize renewable energy in the right parts of our county and in the right zoning districts. So we're trying to, trying very hard to make something that works for the preponderance of people in the areas where it isn't exactly a perfect fit. There's an attempt to tailor the use and the requirements under which it could be permitted to ameliorate and mitigate for some of the potential negative consequences of a use that doesn't quite fit. That said, there is also some dissatisfaction within the community, within certain parts of the community, I should say, with regards to the grandfathering provisions, that there were five, there were five solar applicants to apply either prior or during the moratorium period, and they, they are, under the present provisions, are being permitted to move through the review process. Now, that does not mean that they will be reviewed without any provisions whatsoever. They will be reviewed against and required to comply with the legislation that many of you who are sitting on this particular board adopted, I believe, the year 2013, not positive of that year. So they will, they will, it's not like they're getting off scot-free, so they will still have to adhere to those provisions. And we are, we are taking them back to the beginning with regards to the processes, so they're all going to be having a new community meeting. There won't be any waivers of that community meeting. Then I can tell you that the applicants who are being subjected to that additional community meeting are not real happy about that as well. Going with Mr. Grasso's theory on that, then maybe we got that right too, so. So I hope that answers your question.
It does partially. Certainly, one of my follow-up questions that you already answered was what those existing applicants would have to do, and you've explained that they'd have to go through the process. And I presume that there would be the ability for community members who felt aggrieved to appeal those decisions, just like any other Atlanta decision. But you didn't reference the meeting that I suggested may have happened, and that's fine if you don't want to. I just, I got an email recently that there was a meeting among, I thought that maybe you were included, but it was some of the advocates versus some of the people that were concerned. Maybe you weren't in the meeting, and maybe we'll hear about that from some of the people that are coming up.
I think the meaning that you're referencing was not something that I was...
Okay, very good. We'll either hear about it later or not. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, thank you. Any other questions? Then we'll now open the public hearing on Bill 8918. We have some people signed up, Dr. Alfred Bartlett, Kathy Graham, Stephen Marley, and Carl Benson. Would you please come down at this time? Thank you, good evening. Thanks for your patience with us this evening. Glad you're here. Dr. Bartlett?
Yes, thank you. Counsel emerg, thank you. I'm Dr. Alfred Bartlett. I live at 3702 Cantilworth Drive in North Chitty Chase, that's Montgomery County. I'm a member of the Executive Committee of the Sierra Club Maryland Chapter and a member of the PSC-led Working Group on Community Solar Development. I and members of the Anarundel County Sierra Club group have been privileged to participate in this process that led to Bill 8918. I participated in ag tourism commission meetings, met with the dispersed energy committee, and attended several community meetings on the bill or on the process leading to the bill. At present, we oppose Bill 8918 unless it is amended to remove the 10-mile radius restriction for community solar projects in RA-zoned areas and remove the 20-mile radius restriction for utility solar, and I'll explain that more. Honestly, the bill is more restrictive than we'd hoped. I have spoken with working farmers in the agricultural preservation area who have kids in college and could use income from leasing some land for solar. The bill does appropriately permit, quite freely, accessory and rooftop solar, but that's solar which only serves the property owners. On the other hand, it substantially restricts ground-based community and utility solar that serves large numbers of county residents. Community utility solar is a conditional use in, this bill is proposed, for commercial and industrial land. But the reality is, the extremely high cost of that type of land, plus the economics of solar in Maryland, which are not good, essentially means effectively that community utility solar can only be built on, in RA-zone land by special exception, and that special exception area is where the 10-mile and 20-mile radius provision is inserted and comes into play. 10 miles squared at times 3.14 is 314 square miles. There are only 588 square miles in the county.
Okay, so it's a big circle.
Yep. That means only one future project, which I don't think is the project that Anarundel County wants.
Thank you, Doctor. Thank you for your testimony. Kathy Graham?
Mr. Chairman, I have copies of testimony I'd like to enter for the record.
Thank you.
My name is Kathy Graham. I live at 404 Orundel Road in Fairhaven. I'm testifying tonight on behalf of the Advocates for Herring Bay. Anarundel is making a transition from an era of coal-fired plants in North County to a future of renewable energy. Bill 8918 addresses key aspects of that transition, but leaves some important work undone. On the plus side, the bill makes important strides in protecting forests and sensitive habitats. Those measures should spare us from the clear-cutting scene in Charles County where developers are removing hundreds of acres of forest for solar projects. Similarly, making greenfield projects a special exception should help build public confidence in the county's ability to manage these facilities in an environmentally sound manner. On the other hand, the bill doesn't update the landscape manual. As a result, there's no statutory guarantee that the five pending projects will follow best practices. Whether by law or negotiation, we must ensure that every solar project in Anarundel County, including those five, maintain native grasses under the panels and a diversified mix of native trees, shrubs, and pollinator-friendly plants in the buffers. We also are concerned about provisions that could inadvertently block solar projects that otherwise would be deemed appropriate. Two examples are the 10- and 25-mile exclusion zones and ambiguities in the definitions that could nix projects based on their contractual or grid arrangements. Finally, let's be proactive about our solar future. Rooftops and brownfields may be the best option for a county like ours where the acreage of impervious surfaces exceeds the acreage used for farming. Let's pinpoint suitable sites, identify financial incentives needed to make them economically viable, and enact laws that will get the job done.
Thank you very much for your testimony, Ms. Graham. Stephen Marley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the council. My name is Stephen Marley. I live at 524 Herring Avenue, Tracy's Landing. I'm also here representing the Advocates for Herring Bay. Nearly one year ago, in November 2017, the Advocates submitted a letter to the County Executive and the County Council expressing our concerns that the environmental performance standards being applied to solar projects do not reflect best practices. We urge the county to update the standards in the landscape manual by which, by which law applies to both the current and future projects. While we appreciate the effort that has gone into addressing the concerns about where to build solar rays, there has not been similar progress on the issue of how those sites be developed. Bill 8918 does not update the landscape manual, which means that county officials are issuing permits for the pending solar projects using environmental standards meant for subdivisions and shopping centers. The absence of updated standards puts our environment at risk. Solar energy doesn't pollute the air, but covering dozens of acres with panels can impair soil, habitats, and waterways unless the site is maintained with native beneficial vegetation. The Advocates for Herring Bay urges the council to instruct the county officials to expedite work on new performance standards that are consistent with practices used in other Maryland counties and that permit, and that any permits for pending projects include conditions requiring them to comply with those best practices to the maximum extent practical. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Marley. Appreciate your testimony. Mr. Benson?
Hello, my name is Carl Benson. I live at 377 South Riverside Drive. I firmly believe the change is coming to Anarundel County and that our zoning code cannot prevent change, but we must affirmatively manage change for our communities to thrive. I am deeply concerned about global warming, which is affecting us all. I would note that each year from 2014 to 2016 set a record for the highest recorded temperature, and 2017 was the hottest year on record without the presence of an El Minio. Given that concern, I've been following this process closely and have been disappointed in the way it's gone. I would disagree with the, what's been attributed to Councilman Grasso, that both sides are upset that it's probably gone right. Because in this case, I don't see that most of the concerns that have been addressed by the citizens have been addressed by this bill. What I've heard when I've been following this process is a lot of what we've heard here specifically about the projects in South County, but not hearing from those of us who strongly believe that we do need to promote renewable energies throughout the county and throughout the country and throughout the world. The three things I've heard primarily are the concerns about the specific five proposals, and of course, this, this bill doesn't change anything about those five proposals. They come in as the law was. The other thing I've heard is what Mr. Hager talked about, that we're concerned about having industrial uses and how they might fit into the areas in, in South County and in other areas and how they might affect that. Yet, despite House Bill 1588, Seth Taylor's bill to try and keep that from happening, this language insists on calling solar industrial use contrary to that. It just seems like it solely undermines what we're trying to do here.
Okay. Can you summarize, please?
And the third is just that the vast majority of residents have expressed support for solar, and most have said appropriate use would be to do it on parking lots and rooftops, and yet this bill does not provide for community solar on most parking lots and rooftops. Residents know those possibilities. Not on Annapolis Mall, not on the Village Wall Chapel, not on Park Place, not in Severn, not even at the Community College where it already exists. You could not do that here.
All right. Well, thank you, thank you, Mr. Benson, for your testimony. I'm going to dismiss this panel. Is there anybody else who would like to testify on this matter? Please come down at this time. This will be the last call, so please come now if you'd like to, if you'd like to testify on Bill 8918. Oh, somebody left their briefcase up here. Oh, no, no, it was yours, excuse me. Sorry. All right, we have five last call. And we'll start with you on this end, okay? Would you name an address, please?
Hi, my name is Yedda Finson. I live on 6218 Nodwell Drive in Tracy's Landing.
Pull that microphone to you just a little bit. Thank you.
And I'm a member of Advocates for Herring Bay. We at Advocates for Herring Bay urge you to pass a resolution asking the county government to assess solar potentials in Anarundel County. This will help improve our understanding of where the best opportunities for solar exist and how to incentivize these. For example, there's a lot of citizen support for solar on brownfields, but special environmental rules and incentives may be needed to make that possible. Therefore, understanding the amount and the kinds of brownfields amenable for solar is important. As noted in the letter that Kathy Graham submitted to the council tonight regarding this bill, a solar assessment can be done by combining existing information from the county's GIS databases and with other, and combine this with other state analysis. These existing resources include Maryland DNR's Smart DG Plus database, which analyzes the suitability of county land for ground-based solar. There's also a Maryland PSC study by the consulting firm Daymark Energy Advisors, which analyzed the suitability of agricultural and forestry land for solar in Maryland. Daymark's analysis of the potential, Daymark also analyzed the potential for residential rooftop solar systems in the BGE service area. In addition, the county has existing data on impervious surfaces, which could be used to help identify commercial candidates for rooftop or parking cannabis systems. And the county also has other zoning permitting and GIS databases, which could be used to identify landfills, mines, borrow pits, and other impaired surfaces.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Appreciate it. May I?
Hi, I'm Lisa Bard. I manage the agricultural program for the Anarundel Economic Development Corporation. I also serve on the Agriculture, Farming, and Agri-Tourism Commission. I was a part of the dispersed energy committee and then later the resource team, and I just would like to offer my support for this bill. I think it's a good bill that helps to protect our agricultural land and also to allow for solar development in other areas of the county where I think it's better suited. I am also a director-at-large for the Anarundel County Farm Bureau. This evening, they held their annual meeting. They discussed and voted on this bill, and they would like to offer their support for this bill.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is David Murray. I'm Executive Director of MDV CO. We are the Maryland Solar Energy Industry Association. In short, we have significant concerns that this bill will prevent further solar development in the county. We were instrumental in passing the original community solar bill, which will assist the 50% of households that either rent or have shading on their roof and cannot put solar on their own rooftops. You know, as, as the folks on the previous panel pointed out, the 10-mile rate, distance concern creates about a circle of about 314 square miles, which prevents any community solar farm to be developed, meaning that we can't have more than one or two projects in the entire county. Second of all, there are wide sweeping viewshed restrictions, and I would politely ask, what other forms of development face such viewshed restrictions that are much more, much less environmentally friendly, including residential and commercial real estate? And poultry farms do not face the kind of restrictions that are now going to be placed upon community solar. Solar does not emit noise, light pollution, odors. It does not require water and sewer infrastructure, and there's no additional vehicle traffic once the projects are built. You know, and finally, this, this bill will really fly in the face of property rights. By restricting development and the non-voluntary designation from the priority preservation area and rural legacy areas, we're essentially restricting farmers to be able to set aside a portion of their land for solar. a portion of their land for solar. And I think that this is an important way for farmers to diversify their revenue sources and reinvest in their own land. And ultimately, if we fill out this whole community solar program in BGE's territory, it's 600 acres. That's 600 acres across BGE's entire Tin County territory. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Appreciate it. Thank you. Ma'am?
Good evening, and thank you, council members. My name is Anna Chaney. I am at 5801 Brookswood Road in Lothian, Maryland. I serve as the chairperson for the Agriculture, Agritourism, and Farming Commission for Anarondle County. I'm a farmer, and I'm an entrepreneur. I have been involved in this process for the last eight months, at which time it's been extremely collaborative, very comprehensive, and we have heard from all stakeholders involved in this, from industry to community to special interest groups to farmers, developers, and citizens. We had a public meeting at Southern High School, Southern Middle School, and we had testimony from many citizens and special interest groups, as well as industry. I think that the commission and the committee that was assigned did a fantastic job of hearing all the needs, the concerns, and the issues. I think that this bill is a culmination of that hard work. In addition to the committee, a resource team was assigned after the committee and followed through with the legislation. I do believe and agree with many things that people have said here tonight, and I think that what this bill does is that it protects the previously protected areas as designated by many of you up there tonight, the priority preservation area, the mouth-preserved areas of farmland, and the prime agricultural soils, which are one of the most important resources in this county. I also think that it buys us time. When we get to the general development plan, I think that is a perfect time to study and to come up with a county goal. The county has not created a clear collaborative goal insofar as regenerative or sustainable energy. Once we know what that goal is, we can do exactly what these folks have said and use these impervious areas, the rooftops, the parking lots, et cetera, and potentially create incentives by county council for industry to locate in those areas. The land needs to be protected. This gives us time to do so. It is an excellent bill. I hereby request your support, and thank you so much this evening.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Good evening, Ms. Flickston.
Good evening. I'm here with a letter that I think all of you received, but I wanted to make sure it's in the record, from the Alliance for Liveable Communities, that Growth Action is very active with. And I also have a letter signed by a number of Growth Action members. These were the same people, a lot of the same people, who asked for the moratorium and the permission, and we all agreed we needed a moratorium. Why did we need a moratorium? The regulations we have now were done before this community solar was even thought about, 2013. They're very, very good if you want to put it on your house, but they don't speak to this community solar, which it is kind of industrial, but it's small. But if you look at how many acres we're talking about, there are five projects right now poised. They've applied, and they've been grandfathered. They've been grandfathered before we even finished the bill. A lot of the work that went into this bill is fantastic. I don't think it's going to apply to one person. If you get five people in South County, which is where they all want to go, on greenfields and farms now because they're grandfathered, there are no special exception hearings, talk about no public input, they're grandfathered. And the bill is, I think, 11 pages. All that stuff has value. It's not perfect, but it has value. Won't apply to any of the five, and that could be up to 100 acres. And we talked about incentives. I think there are a lot of ways we can incentivize people by not having a special exception, for example, conditional uses if they're on brownfields, already disturbed land on top of landfills. But there are no incentives like that, so people are going to do the easiest thing. We've been trying to protect farms for years. The bill itself, we don't have a problem with. I think there are things that can be done. The grandfathering, I think, makes this whole thing ridiculous. So I wanted to bring the letter from, I have 10 copies of that, from the folks who asked for the moratorium and now realize it didn't mean anything.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Everybody testified, right? We'll dismiss this panel, and I think this was last call, right? There's nobody else? Anybody else? We're all done. We'll now close the public hearing on Bill 8918. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 8918.
Bill Number 8918, An Ordnance Concerning Zoning Conditional Uses -- it's not working. Special Exception Uses Solar Energy Generating Facilities.
Thank you. There's an amendment. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number One.
Amendment Number One. This technical amendment corrects a cross-reference to another section in the ordinance.
Thank you.
Move to adopt, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you for that. Any other, I'm sorry, Mr. Marzick.
Mr. Chairman, it's just a mistake in the drafting of the bill.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion on that? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number One.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Peruca?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number One is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Since it's a technical amendment, we can vote on the bill tonight. Am I right?
Yes.
Mr. Chair.
Any other thoughts here? Mr. Trumbauer?
Yes, thank you. Before we vote, just a couple of follow-up questions to the panel, if I might. So interestingly, I mean, we kind of heard what I thought we would. We heard some people opposing from one direction, some people opposing from another direction. We heard some interesting suggestions, which I wanted to ask you about. Two things jumped out at me from the testimony of the advocates for Herring Bay. The number one was updating the landscape manual. Can you share anything? I know maybe that's not your department, Mr. Hager, but if anyone from the panel can share anything of what that timeline might be to update that manual?
It is my -- it's my understanding that that will be coming to the council in the spring.
And?
An updated version of the landscape. There is a landscape manual.
I understand that. So the update's coming in the spring, the new council. Is it your understanding that it has the potential to address some of the concerns that were brought forward?
Absolutely. It's an important part that we're going to be advocating strongly be included in the new landscape manual.
Okay, thank you. And then the second thing is, it was suggested that the county, I guess the council could do a resolution expressing the renewable energy goals of the county, which seems reasonable at this late hour in the term. I don't know that the council's going to pull that together, but that seemed to have value to me, and I'm not aware of any articulation of the county's renewable energy goals. Is that something that your office is interested in or that you would find helpful?
We would be happy to take direction from the council with regards to our future work program, and if that's something that everyone feels has value, it's certainly something that we can look at. Obviously, if it's going to be a significant undertaking manpower-wise, we would need a direction from somebody in order to redirect our resources or provide us with additional resources to perform that.
But would you agree that having some stated goals would be helpful from a policy perspective of, I mean, issues like this, but potentially other things? I mean, renewable energy ain't going away, right? It's only going to, I think, become a more and more part of society, and so without any stated vision or goals, it makes it hard for decision-makers to decide if we're being consistent or not.
Councilman, I would have to agree with you on that and have to also say that in the absence of something like that, it would lead those people who are attacking this piece of legislation, it would give them grounds to say that, oh, we're just trying to stop this use from occurring in Anarondle County, and nothing could be further from the truth, because in fact, much of what is in here that was not discussed has to do with incentivizing these uses in the areas where we would like to see these occur as opposed to greenfield development on our precious few remaining agricultural areas within this county.
And then one final point. Well, I just, I want to give you the opportunity. I heard some opposition from industry and others about this 10- and 20-mile radius. Do you agree with their assessment that once that goes into place, it's essentially limiting it to the five existing applicants? And is that your intention, I guess?
The committee that put this together felt very strongly that there needed to be some type of a threshold utilized for spacing of these types of uses, and that was what was recommended coming out of that. There are a number of other factors in this bill that directly relate to where these things should be in order to make sure that each of the various stakeholder interests and the environmental and economic and every other aspect associated with those different stakeholders' views was taken into consideration in some type of a balance addressed in the bill. So in an effort to try to address that, that was the number we came up with. I submit that one of the things that we tried to do was to utilize careful planning and careful analysis to get to the point where we actually, before we drafted legislation, and it came through a process. As we know, there's going to continue to be opportunities to refine this legislation. Hopefully, it's not going to follow the same course as our cannabis legislation, but we're going to have real-life experience with the five applications that are currently going through the process. I suspect that that's going to point out flaws that we have that will present opportunities for us with the new council to suggest additional refinements. At that time, if we find that the 10-acre or the 10-mile radius presents problems, it would be an appropriate time at that point when we have real-life experience to utilize to make refinements in the bill.
And it's more likely to be a problem, or rather, a constraint for the industry if all five of those existing ones were to get approved, right? I mean, if only two of them did, for instance, the radiuses would cover less of the area. Am I right on that?
You are right, but a couple of other things here that, one of the things that we're going to try to do with this is to shift the paradigm of the industry from utilizing precious greenfield areas to utilizing brownfield areas, old quarry sites, old landfill sites, industrial sites, those types of areas as preferred, and we are hoping that our county will be a leader in changing that way of looking at things.
And so that philosophy that you just described, that's compatible with this bill before us, or you're saying that, okay?
It is.
Because I very much want us to prioritize brownfields over greenfields.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, there are specific things within this bill incentivizing, and the use in the industrial zones is a conditional use as opposed to a special exception use. So when one looks at the costs and difficulty associated with getting one of these facilities approved, if they look at that, they're going to say, wow, it looked like it would make sense for us to take a hard look at one of these other options as opposed to a greenfield site.
Great. And then a final question, if I may, Mr. Chair. I know I've been talking.
Yes, Mr. Trumbauer. May I jump in on this? And I also believe the way to incentivize it is to not have the mile restriction for industrially-zoned areas.
That is also true.
Right. So the mileage restriction is only for the special exceptions, which are going to be in the overall.
Okay, thank you. No, thank you. I want to be careful how I ask this last question, because I know that you don't want to tip your hand on the process or anything, so let me just say, would you be surprised, personally, if all five of the applicants made it through to completion that are under consideration now? And you don't have to answer that, but I'm trying to get a sense of how likely it is that we have all five. Greg just told you not to do it, so that's fine. Let me ask it a different way, and why don't I just ask Greg if this is okay? Can I ask him if it's a viable possibility, or even a likely possibility, that some of those five would not pass the current process?
Well, I think he can certainly talk to you about where they are in the process, but there are a lot of factors that go through it, and I think if you're asking his personal opinion, it's different than your.
All right. I don't want to get anybody in trouble. I just want to ask, I want to know if those five are a done deal or not. And maybe we can't ask that. My perception is they are not a done deal because they have to go through the process, and there are going to be regulations applied to them that Mr. Hager's office will go through.
And we are also requiring that they all go back and have, start at the beginning with the community engagement process. There will be community meetings, there will be opportunities for the people to come to support, to oppose, to offer suggestions and comments. And as with all of these things, if there's modifications requested, that will have to be justified and warranted, and that's an opportunity for an appeal, once they actually get an appeal, if they get, excuse me, once they get approved, if they get approved, then that's an appealable process. So I would say that to characterize these as a done deal would be grossly inaccurate.
Okay, thank you. That's an acceptable answer, Mr. Swain.
Yes.
He's not in trouble?
Thank you. That's all been approved.
Mr. Walker?
Mr. Chair, Ms. Hager, just one real quick question. The five applicants, if you were to draw those 10-mile rings around the five that exist currently, do any of those overlap, or have you taken, did this commission take the time to look at those?
I have not actually performed that analysis.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Chair.
Anything further? Mr. Marzick, anything else?
No, sir.
All right. We did the technical amendment. We can vote on it, right? Madam Secretary, please, please, wait a minute. Where are we? We're on 89, right?
89.
Yeah. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill 8918.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Peruca?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 8918, as amended, is passed.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 9018.
Bill Number 9018, An Ordnance Concerning Animal Control Potentially Dangerous and Vicious Animals.
Thank you, Mr. Grasso.
I've got nothing to say.
Oh, you're kidding.
I've got nothing to say. We've got a collaborative effort between our animal people, the administration, and we have a bill, an amendment coming in, and that's it. Let's move forward.
Thank you very much. Mr. Marzick?
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Bernie Marzick, County Executive, Jonathan Smith, Robin Catlett from Animal Control, Captain Hassan Bush from the Police Department, and Karen Ritter from the Office of Law. As Mr. Grasso said, we did work with the advocates on this piece of legislation, and we will defer to the council on this, as you all recently changed this law. We do have an amendment at the appropriate time that we will address.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion, questions? If not, we'll open the public hearing on Bill Number 9018. Bob Rude, Kelly Brown, Elizabeth Chaney, William Hemmer have signed up for the bill. Good evening, folks. Thank you for being here. Mr. Rude?
You're welcome.
Mr. Rude?
Okay. Bob Rude with 3200 Ivy Way. I'm a 33-year resident of Anarondle County, and I've been active at Almater for over 23 years. My wife and I founded Reed Ranch Animal Rescue in 2001 and spaced by Nudernook in 2012, and I've done extensive work in animal rescue and disaster response with animals in all kinds of different situations, under stress. Just kind of telling you this to let you know I have experience in this, and you know, this bill will fix some issues with a legal law that was passed last year to give people a chance to have their evidence weighed on a case-by-case basis to reach a fair decision. Just here, I want to shorten things up because it's been a long night, but I fully support the bill and encourage you guys to do the same.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your testimony. Miss Brown, Kelly Brown?
Yes, good evening.
Good evening.
How are you? I'm a longtime resident of Anarondle County, and I'm currently the president of the SPCA. I've served for seven years, which I believe has given me some great insight into this matter. I'm here today to show my support of Bill 9018, which provides much-needed clarity and definitions to the current dangerous dog ordinance. Bill 9018 allows for a more focused and well-defined set of criteria for each designation that will enable better enforcement and thus increase compliance with the law. The new law offers clear definitions and terms, making it so that animal control officers and the Animal Control Commission are more likely to be able to identify problematic situations. The law gives law enforcement more options in correcting any issues while continuing to protect our community. Under the current definitions and terms, I believe that animal control is too limited in its options to weigh both the safety of the public and the best interests of affected dogs. Animal control and the commission need the ability to tailor the remedy to suit the circumstance, and Bill 9018 makes this possible. It allows a wide enough net to address a wide range of conduct, and just as importantly, to allow animal control and the commission to be able to determine how to classify each situation and what the conditions and requirements on owners should be. These changes would significantly These changes would significantly improve the current law, so I ask you to support 9018 with amendment.
Thank you very much, Ms. Brown. Elizabeth Cheney.
My name is Elizabeth Cheney, 5601 Brooks Woods Road, Lothian. Thank you for hearing our statements this evening. I'm testifying in support of Bill 9018. I'm a lifelong resident of Anarundel County. I've been a professional dog trainer for 19 years. I own and operate a pet resort and dog training facility in Lothian. I'm also a FEMA-certified canine handler instructor and evaluator. I'm currently on the Anarundel County Animal Control Commission, although I'm not representing the commission in an official capacity this evening. Ordinances pertaining to dangerous dog designations must prioritize public safety and allow the adjudicating party sufficient authority and clarity to handle the wide range of cases that come before them. The code update last year was a great start. Bill 9018 makes it much better. Some key points are, the intent, authority, and enforcement provided by the current legislation remains intact. Having three designations instead of two allows the greatest opportunity to appropriately designate dogs, and the revisions strengthen the code and provide more definitive direction to animal control of the public and the commission. The Bill 9018 is functional, comprehensive, thoroughly, and thoughtfully drafted legislation. Please support this bill with the amendment that you will hear later this evening by the administration. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cheney. William Hemmer.
Hey, good evening. My name is Dr. William Hemmer. I live at 1110 Chuckle Lane, Crownsville, Maryland, and I wish to testify in support of Bill 9018. I've been an Anarundel County resident for over 25 years, and I've been a Maryland licensed veterinarian for over 30 years. I've owned seven veterinary hospitals in Virginia and Maryland, and I've employed dozens of veterinarians and have seen thousands of patients over the years. I continue to practice at Arnold Veterinary Hospital in Arnold, Maryland. I've recently completed my second consecutive term as the veterinarian serving on the Anarundel County Animal Control Commission. My terms span from April 2014 through June 2018. Serving on the commission during those years has given me the unique perspective of having heard dozens of cases that apply the older code written in 2005, and cases that applied the new code, Lelo's Law, passed in 2017. The code written in 2005 needed to be updated to address vicious dogs. The updated code addresses vicious, addresses the vicious dog issue and is well-intentioned and, in fact, needed to become part of the county code. But the code needed to provide clarity and guidance that'll be helpful for the public, animal control, and the Animal Control Commission. Bill 9018 will provide that clarity and guidance. It combines the best aspects of the previous 2005 code and Lelo's Law. It will add more structure and fullness to the current code. Bill 9018 keeps the intent of Lelo's Law, the vicious order classification, the notification, and dangerous pet registry are all maintained in the new law. Revisions in Bill 9018 add the much-needed definitions that will allow animal control officers to better apply the law based on their investigations. It affords the citizens of the county the transparency needed to see the criteria the agency is using in the determination of their orders, and it allows the Animal Control Commission to make modifications based on testimony of the involved parties. I ask the council to strongly support the bill.
Thank you, thank you, Doc. Appreciate that very much. We'll dismiss this panel. Is anybody else that's not signed up, want to testify on this matter? Please come down at this time, last call. Seeing no movement, we will close the public hearing on Bill 9018. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 9018.
Bill Number 9018, An Ordnance Concerning Animal Control Potentially Dangerous and Vicious Animals.
Thank you. There's an amendment. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number One.
Amendment Number One. This amendment removes the date provisions for when an animal was determined to be dangerous or potentially dangerous to be included on the dangerous animal registry.
Move to adopt, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Marzick.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, this was an error that we saw after the drafting of the bill. This, as you'll remember, when you took out potentially dangerous from the code, we now just need to add that back into the code, which is what this amendment does. And if I may, Mr. Chairman, we'd like to thank the previous panel because those folks are the ones who were extremely persistent with pushing this bill forward and have been tirelessly pushing to have this changed in the code, so I just wanted to put that on the record.
Thank you. You just thanked them for being persistent.
Yes.
For being extremely persistent.
Mr. Corrin is coming up later on, and we'll thank him for being persistent as well.
Mr. Grasso.
Yeah, I just want to tell the council that I support the amendment 9018, or excuse me, the amendment one on 9018.
Thank you, Mr. Grasso, and thanks for your persistence. Is there anything else? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number One.
Mr. Smith.
Well, since Mr. Grasso gave us the opportunity to vote for it, so I'll vote aye.
Mr. Grasso.
Aye.
Mr. Fink.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Trumpbauer.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Peruca.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, amendment number one is adopted.
Thank you. Bill Number 9018 as amended will be heard on October 15, 2018. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 9418.
Bill Number 9418, An Ordnance Concerning Subdivision and Development, Adequate School Facilities, Parole Town Center Growth Management Area.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Mr. Trumpbauer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We discussed this at the work session, so I won't go over it again. I'll just summarize very briefly what the bill does. So, this concerns the parole growth management area. You'll remember that there was a work group convened to look at the adequate public facilities ordinance with the school test. One of the things that came out of that was the fact that the county.
Mr. Trumpbauer, can I interrupt you a second?
Yeah, you want to stop the sidebar conversation over there? That'd be great.
The, this side of the dais is doing it again.
Well, you're not going to listen to me anyway, so what does it matter?
The well-behaved side of the dais would like the less well-behaved side of the dais, too.
Thank you.
Be well behaved. Mr. Trumpbauer, please continue.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As I was saying, this, this bill concerns the parole growth management area. There is currently an exemption to the school capacity test in the core of the parole growth management area. That's always bothered me. So, this bill gets rid of that exemption, but in its place, it puts a conditional exemption that will allow mixed-use developments to not have to do the capacity test if they meet, I believe it's six requirements. And the six requirements, very briefly, are structured parking, mixed use, no more, or, I'm sorry, more than 50% have to be either one-bedroom or efficiency units. They have bicycle and pedestrian enhancements. They are going to address traffic, and none of the modifications can be varied, or none of those can be modified, rather. And so, the intent of this is simply to say that in the parole growth management area, we will incentivize what I'll call smart-growth projects, and the whole reason behind this is, right now, because Annapolis High School is closed, you can't do any major development there, which generally is a good thing. That's how the law is supposed to work. The problem is that these types of development that the bill speaks to don't generate very many students. In fact, very large developments that have mostly one-bedroom and efficiency units may only generate a literal handful of students. So, what this would do is it would allow smart-growth development to take place, and that development would pay full freight on the impact fees, so this could be millions of dollars that would go to the school system to address capacity issues, and they would only generate a much lesser volume of students than a traditional development would. And the reason I think that this is worthwhile is because, number one, we have a six-year threshold on, you know, on things getting approved when there is a capacity test failure. So, a developer can build whatever they want if they just wait six years, and we get no benefit out of that. And number two, if we don't redevelop in an area, especially an area that's designed to get the density and be a vibrant area, it's going to become stagnant, and, you know, we have the opportunity to place smart-growth projects where the infrastructure is designed to handle it. And so, I think that this is a good approach. It's certainly not a comprehensive approach to our school capacity issues. It's more like a Band-Aid, but I'm sure that in the general development plan process and the comprehensive rezoning that the next council will undertake, they'll be happy to look at a more comprehensive solution. But in the meantime, I think this will help our school system and help put some smart-growth projects in the parole area. So, thank you for indulgence in that, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Trumpbauer. Any other discussion? There is, anything further, Mr. Marzick?
We're, Mr. Chairman, members of the council, we're supportive of the bill as we discussed at the work session.
Okay, then, we will, we'll now open the public hearing on Bill 9418. Do we have anybody sign up for this? I'm sorry, I stole one from you. Is anybody, okay, there's nobody. If anybody would like to testify on Bill Number 9418, please come forward at this time. Seeing the movement, we'll close, the public hearing on Bill Number 9418 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of 9418.
Bill Number 9418, An Ordnance Concerning Subdivision and Development, Adequate School Facilities, Parole Town Center Growth Management Area.
Thank you. There are amendments. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number One.
Amendment Number One. This amendment clarifies that the grandfathering provision applies specifically to applications filed before the effective date of the ordinance.
Move to adopt, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Trumpbauer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This was suggested by the auditor to clarify. That's pretty simple.
Okay, any further discussion? Mr. Marzick?
No, sir.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Would you please call the roll on Amendment Number One?
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Grasso.
Aye.
Mr. Fink.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Trumpbauer.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Peruca.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, Bill Number 9418, I mean, my apologies, Amendment Number One is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Would you please read Amendment Number Two?
Amendment Number Two. This amendment adds a prohibition against vehicular access from scenic and historic roads or local roads that directly access a scenic or historic road.
Move to adopt, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Trumpbauer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, you, the rest of my colleagues probably are not as familiar with the parole growth management area as me, but some of it extends just up into the General's Highway area, where we just had a very long debate about some land use issues. And so, that particular area would not necessarily seem appropriate to me to incentivize any sort of mixed-use development. So, General's Highway is a historic and scenic road, and so, this would just preclude these provisions being applied to that. So, it's a very small segment of the parole growth management area, so I don't even think any projects would really ever go there, but just as a margin of safety, I'm putting this in. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions, Mr. Trumpbauer? Mr. Marzick?
Nothing to add.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number Two.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Grasso.
Aye.
Mr. Fink.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Trumpbauer.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Peruca.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, Amendment Number Two is adopted.
Thank you. Bill Number 9418 as amended will be heard on October 15, 2018. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 7818 as amended.
Bill Number 7818, An Ordnance Concerning Subdivision and Development, Roads, Multimodal Transportation.
Thank you, Mr. Trumpbauer.
Administration Bill, Mr. Chair, but I will just reiterate my support and thank Mr. Corrin for all of his work in the Bike Commission. I think this thing is ready to rock at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Marzick.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Bernie Marzick from County Executive's Office with me at table, Greg Swain from the Office of Law, and Tanya Aspin from Office of Transportation. We are supportive of this bill. We've discussed this multiple times. We'd be happy to answer any questions the council has.
Is there any discussion, any questions? We'll open the public hearing on Bill Number 7818. Do we have people signed up for this? Mr. John Corrin. Mr. John Persistence Corrin, all right? Good evening, sir.
John Corrin, Hillcrest Lane, Severna Park. I just can't be this close to the mic and not say a couple of words. This bill is about, among other things, traffic reduction, and there's, we heard a lot about traffic tonight, as we do all of the time, the GDP, listening sessions, every place. There's no less expensive, environmentally-friendly, healthy way to reduce traffic than by providing safe, equitable options to automobile travel, and that's what this bill does. It makes it more attractive to be able to bike, walk, and use transit, particularly when nationally about 40% of automobile trips are three miles or less. You're not going to get all of those to switch over, but if you make it safe, you'll get many of them. This was a very collaborative process. We have support from the Maryland Building Industry Association, Alliance for Livable Communities, came together, found consensus, and bring you a clean bill that's got broad support. Finally, this is probably the last time I'll be in front of this particular council. I want to thank all of you. You've been accessible, engaged, thoughtful. We have been strategic and selective about what we have brought to council, and you've supported it every time, and I'll thank you for supporting this last one.
Thank you, Mr. Corrin. Thank you very much. Anybody else? Last call, would like to testify on this matter? We'll now close the public hearing on Bill 7818. Sorry. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 7818 as amended.
Bill Number 7818, An Ordnance Concerning Subdivision and Development, Roads, Multimodal Transportation.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? I'm going to add one comment myself. I do have some concerns about this bill, and I'm going to vote against it. I am all for, I'm very sympathetic toward the whole idea of putting people, making it safe and convenient for people to walk and to bike. What I worry about in the bill is the, is the aspect of trying to force people to do that, trying to move people in that direction. Today, actually, in the news today was the takedown of the, or the elimination of the, what they did on Main Street in Annapolis, and because there were some, it caused some difficulties. So, I don't know if that's directly related, but it was in the news today. So, I have, I don't have concerns about the process of making, making things more convenient, making things more safe. However, I do worry about the idea of a social engineering kind of approach where we're trying to move people out of cars and onto bikes and footpath against, by making it, actually causing more congestion and making that happen. I think that's what happened on Main Street, for example. So, I'm sorry for the, for the long story, but I just wanted to explain that I have some concerns about this process. Now, having said that, does anybody else want to say anything? Nope? Okay. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill 7818 as amended.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Grasso.
Aye.
Mr. Fink.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Trumpbauer.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Peruca.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, Bill Number 7818 is passed.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Please read the title of Bill 8618.
Bill Number 8618, An Ordnance Concerning Finance, Taxation, and Budget, Zoning, Commercial Revitalization District Program, Designation of Commercial Revitalization Area in Ferndale.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Grasso.[1712.16]
I'm just supportive of the effort to revitalize that area.
Thank you, Mr. Marzick.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, members of council, Bernie Marzick in the County Executive's Office, with me at the table Lynn Miller from Planning and Zoning, Julie Musog from Economic Development Corporation, Lori Blair Klosmeyer from the Office of Law. As we discussed at the work session, 8618 creates a commercial revitalization district program in Ferndale. The commercial corridor contains a variety of local retail businesses, including auto service and repair shops, convenience markets, restaurants, and taverns, churches, and salons. It also includes the Ferndale Light Rail Station. Although historically, the corridor has served as an activity center for Ferndale area residents in years. Since the last recession, this area has experienced some downturn, including a number of building vacancies and several issues related to noncompliance with building and zoning code regulations. We believe we can create some economic opportunity in this area with this legislation. We'd ask you to support the bill tonight, and thank you to the cosponsors.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any other questions for the panel? Then we will open the public hearing on bill number 8618. Signups to this? No signups? Anybody would like to testify on 8618, please come down at this time. Seeing the movement, we'll close the public hearing on bill number 8618. Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill number 8618.
Bill number 8618, an ordinance concerning finance, taxation, and budget, zoning, commercial revitalization district program, designation of commercial revitalization area in Ferndale.
Thank you. Any final discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on bill number 8618.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Grasso.
Aye.
Mr. Fink.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Peruca.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill number 8618 is passed.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Please read the title of bill number 8718.
Bill number 8718, an ordinance concerning subdivision and development, fees and security, development impact fees.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Mr. Marzick.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, Bernie Marzick in the County Executive's Office, with me at the table Phil Hager from Planning and Zoning, and Greg Swain from the Office of Law. As we discussed at the work session, bill 8718 reduces the number of school impact fee districts from seven to four. This was a recommendation from the Adequate Public Facilities Work Group that Mr. Trumbauer referenced earlier that met through the spring. The impact fee districts are based on the high school feeder districts established by the Board of Education. We provided the updated maps to the council that would be outlining these presumed districts.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Let's take.
Just out of curiosity, why, why are we doing this now instead of when we do the comprehensive look at the impact fees, which I think is somewhat overdue? Why is the map being changed now?
This was a recommendation that came from the work group that Mr. Peruca and Mr. Trumbauer served on, and we thought the time was good to change the map now.
Okay. It's just normally that the whole thing is done is sort of, there's a study done on the impact fees and how they're being allocated, and usually it's done sort of in a comprehensive approach, and this just seems kind of like a piecemeal change.
As I recall this, well, Mr. Hager, you going to comment on that?
Phil Hager, again, Office of Planning and Zoning. With regards to the fees, that is done through a separate process. This is only related to geography, and I believe that the expectation of the committee that met was that they were going to create a larger degree of efficiency with regards to how the funds that are, that are collected could be utilized. The thought process there was that, was that the rate at which it can be used and where it can be used was, in some cases, providing delays in where the funds and when the funds could be used.
Right. On the one hand, if you have too many, if you have too many zones, then you don't have enough money in any particular bucket. On the other hand, if you have too few zones, then you're spending people's, theoretically people's money here that came from there.
Correct.
Mr. Check.
Can I follow, just because I guess my question is, there are impact fees, which are designed to be used where the impact is.
Right.
So if you have fewer zones, you have a larger area by which the impact could be changed or diluted. So that's why I asked the question.
Understood. That was, that was kind of the yin and the yang of the discussion that I recall in the group. Mr. Walker?
Mr. Hager, do you recall on the, on the committee, if there were any people from the southern part of the county, my district, South County in particular? Well, I mean, just, I'll just say, the reason I'm, I'm, I don't vote against this, and I expressed some concern about it at the work group, you know, currently, basically what's happening is you're eliminating the southern district. There's some line changes around other areas, but the, the southern high feeder system is being completely eliminated. So impact fees that are collected in South County are more than likely going to be spent up in the, you know, Annapolis and Gambles, Odenton area. And I just, I just object to that, so that's why I'm going to vote against it, so.
We had this discussion at the work session, I think. I look at it the opposite way, that the money from there is going to be coming down to South County. I mean, you're not going to have the same impact fees collected in South County as you are up in the Annapolis area, right?
I disagree. It's just a difference of viewpoint. It's not, you know, it's fine, is what it is.
That, yeah, that was a discuss, Mr. Trumbauer was there. Mr. Trumbauer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So my recollection is not that this came from the development community. They don't care where their fees go to. They have to pay the fees. I mean, I, I thought this came from the school system, saying, if there's bigger pools of money, we can do more things to mitigate the impact. And so Mr. Walker's concern is valid. I mean, that's certainly possible, but like Mr. Marzick said, the flip side of that is the southern district is now pooled with, with the Annapolis area, which may have the potential to bring more money down there. I mean, I don't know how it's going to play out, but I know that the, the planning department and DPW, whomever, have discretion. I don't, I don't think that they would forsake one area of the county over another, so.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Pruski.
Yes, Mr. Hager, I don't want to have Mr. Chek know what you come up, but my understanding is the school system supports this.
Yes.
The Board of Education for the record. And then, number two, in terms of projects, the capital budget, which eventually, I think we have a resolution in the next meeting, is still decided on by the Board of Education. This is just impact fee zone and areas. Again, the priorities still come from the school system, not from the county. Am I correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pruski. All right, is there anything further? Madam Secretary, please read the, oh, we'll open the public hearing on bill number 8718. Do you already do that?
No, you're right, good. You're under signups.
Under signups for 8718. Anybody who should testify on this matter, please come down at this time. Seeing the movement, we'll close the public hearing on 8718. Madam Secretary, please read the title of number eighty, bill number 8718.
Bill number 8718, an ordinance concerning subdivision and development, fees and security, development impact fees.
Final discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on bill number 8718.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Grasso.
Aye.
Mr. Fink.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Nay.
Mr. Peruca.
Nay.
Five in the affirmative, two in the negative. Bill numbers 8718 is passed.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill number 8818.
Bill number 8818, an ordinance concerning zoning requirements for conditional uses, stables, or riding clubs.
Thank you, Mr. Marzick.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, Bernie Marzick in County Executive's Office, with me at table Lori Rhodes from Planning and Zoning, Lori Blair Klosmeyer from the Office of Law. Bill 8818 changes the required 200-foot setback from any residentially-zoned lot line for structures housing a horse to align with the required 50-foot setback from any non-residential lot line. It also reduces the setback for manure storage from 100 feet to 50 feet from any lot line. This recommendation came from the Agriculture and Agritourism Commission as a result of the agritourism bill that the council passed last year. You may remember, you got some feedback after that bill passed about what was, I guess, perceived as an unintended consequence, so this should be the resolution to that issue.
Thank you, Mr. Marzick. Is there any questions for, I don't know, any thoughts?
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, Mr. Trumbauer.
I'm sorry, just a quick clarification. So these only apply to stables and riding clubs, right? So this, this manure thing, moving, moving the manure from 100 to 50 feet, I mean, someone could have a manure pile twice as close to their house as they did before under this, but is that, where are these clubs? I, my question is like, where are these clubs? Are they all in South County?
That's right.
I don't know, I don't do horses. I don't know where stables and riding clubs are.
I think Ms. Chaney is actually playing to testify for the commission, and she may be a good person to ask that question.
Fantastic. Thank you. I will, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Anything for, any other questions? Then we'll open up the public hearing on bill number 8818. I don't, I don't see a sign up sheet for that. Is there a sign up sheet?
She's playing with all.
Okay. Anybody would like to testify on bill 88, excuse me, 8818, please come down at this time? Ms. Chaney, good evening.
Hi. Oh, it's on, okay. Hi, I'm Anna Chaney, and I'm 5801 Brookswood Road, on, this is the manure bill and the stables bill. And yes, to, for the sake of time, I'll try not to have too much comedy, but what's your address, Mr. Trumbauer?
I live in Annapolis.
Oh, okay. It's not in your backyard, then?
No.
So this is actually just a correction. So with the agritourism bill that passed last year, the, the distance was changed inadvertently. So this is just putting back to what it's been forever and ever. So it doesn't change anything. It just, it made it just a little more difficult for farmers, so it's been this way for many years, and the way we're trying to get it back to. It was, it's just a correction. Any other questions? Okay. I support the bill. The commission voted unanimously to support this bill. Thank you for making the correction very much.
Thank you. Is anybody else like to testify on this bill? If not, we'll close the public hearing on bill 8818. Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill 8818.
Bill number 8818, an ordinance concerning zoning requirements for conditional uses, stables, or riding clubs.
Any further discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on bill number 8818.